Zone, the proposed map change may be viewed at the below link. Item number three, discussion and consideration of the request of Timothy Hollister, Henley Allen Authorized Asian for W E Partners is development. Applicant in seven fifty-one Weed Street LLC as owners for an eight thirty G set aside site plan application. For the property located seven fifty-one Weed Street map thirty-two block twenty lot nine forty-four in the one acre zone. Before we get going, I would like to lay out how we'll plan to hear this application tonight and over the next couple of weeks. Tonight, what we will have is we'll listen to the applicant make their presentation. We will also provide the opportunity for the commissioners as well as our advisors to the commission to have question and answer. With the applicant, we will not be taking any public input. Currently, we have designated. A special meeting on July thirteen in which I expect to devote all or most of the session to a public input session to listen to the public. Heard there are a couple of thoughts on that. We're, we're pretty much going to follow the process that we follow on all applications and we're going to follow the process. That we will typically on applications that are, let's call it high public note. So what that means is from a public perspective and now talking more specifically to July thirteen is we'll look to hear the views and analysis for the public. One thing that I would like to point out is that session is the way we handle things. It's not so much for the public to engage in Q and A with either us or the applicant. It's for the public to provide input to the commission. The commission may follow up on applicant question on questions from the public to the applicant as well as we may even follow up with our own planner. But that's the process that we will follow. Also that evening. For each individual speaker, I will limit the time for speaking on that evening, probably to about three minutes or so. Now that said, and again, this is what we do with other applications. We will allocate more time to expert input. That might be representing various areas of the public. So for example, could be land use lawyers. Could be environmental input, could be drainage, could be safety, anything having to do with the applicant. So we will devote more time to those types of representatives. The final thing I'd like to say for tonight and the entire process is I, I know that there's a lot of concern on this application. I know there's distress. I know there's distrust on this application. The one thing I would request everyone to do is as always to be civil and. Polite and respectful of whatever input you may have during the process. Commissioners. We have tentatively engaged, subject to your approval at the applicant's expense, certain advisors. They are Andrew Kingsbury, who will be advising us as to life and safety issues. It will be also John Thompson as to traffic and circulation issues. So commissioners, are you comfortable with us engaging those applicants, those consultants?
Yes.
Right. Okay, thank you. Also commissioners, you should be aware tonight, we're also joined by Fire Chief Albie Basset. Fire Marshal Paul Payne and Town Engineer Maria Copeland. And if you do later on in the evening, if you do have questions for them, we can engage in that, in that, in those types of questions as well. Attorney Gelderman, anything you want to add right now?
Right now, thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, Attorney Hollister, I turn it over to you.
Uh, excuse me, this is Paul Knag. I had problems getting in on now.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Knag.
Am I good to go, Mr. Chair?
You are, please proceed.
Good evening, Chairman Goodwin, members of the commission, town staff, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Attorney Tim Hollister from Hartford, representing the owner and applicant. Mr. Chair, before we go any further, I wonder since it's a topic that's on the table right now, your laid out process. Can you explain when we're going to hear from the peer reviewers, Mr. Thompson and Mr. Kingsbury? Would that be on July thirteenth?
Yes, that's my expectation, Attorney Hollister.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, let me introduce the, the team and the speakers who are here with me are Consulting Professional Engineer. Lynn DeAndrea and his associate Adam Serini. Our traffic engineer is Kevin Soli, who is.
Attorney Hollister? Yes, I apologize. Let me point out one more thing. Apologize for getting in the way. The one thing I have advised our consultants is this evening, they are free to ask questions of your team, just to be clear.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I, I, I will tell you, I mostly want to know. We're working on our response to their initial comments. I just wanted to get a timeframe as to when.
Yeah.
Make sure that they are prepared when we, and we're prepared with them.
Sounds good. Okay, sorry, sorry to interrupt.
That's okay. And Kevin Soli has been assisted on this application by his colleague, Colleen Byrne. Our planning consultant is Dr. Donald Poland, who is here. There we go. Hi, Don. Mary Blackburn, also of Soli Engineering, is our landscape architect and lighting designer. And John Eisen of the Eisen Group in Washington DC is our consulting architect and I'm accompanied by my colleague, Ryan Hoiler. I want to thank the town staff for their logistical help in getting to tonight. A couple of things for the record, procedural compliance, the proposed regulation. And the rezoning map were filed more than ten days ago, June sixth with the town clerk. Notices were published in the New Canaan Advertiser on June ninth and June twenty-second as required. The required mailing went out on June eighth and we provided staff with the. Certificate of mailing, the address list and the letter, which I have seen on the town website. The application materials, the, the main filing was on. March thirty-first. Twenty twenty-two supplemented last week by materials with a cover date of June fifteenth. I would note that the supplemental materials last week are basically informational. They don't change any of the. Sightlands, a lot of it dealt with property values if you've had a chance to look at it. So tonight we're going to make what I would call our initial. Presentation, as I just mentioned, we are in the process of responding to. Comments already received from the town engineer, from Mr. Thompson, Mr. Kingsbury and the town planner. And we anticipate that we will be tweaking in very minor ways. And clarifying the plans and the applications, but with the now knowing that we'll proceed on Ju- July thirteenth, we will. Aim to get that done well in advance of that meeting. So we all have the tweaks as well as the original plans to look at. Apologize in advance, just doing my job, but I do need to bring up the, what I called the predetermination inquiry. My letter of June seventh, which I assume you all received a copy of. As I think you know, I had to do this because it came to our attention that two members of the Water Pollution Control Authority. Had to recuse themselves from the process because they had, I guess publicly committed to opposing the application before the hearing. So I will respectfully ask each member of the commission to answer on the record three questions. From January twenty twenty-two to today, have you signed a petition opposing this application? Have you made a financial contribution to a group opposing this application? And have you represented to anyone prior to this hearing your intent to vote against the application? So I guess unless Attorney Gelderman has a different idea.
Well, Attorney Hollister. You know, frankly, I find it a bit insulting.
I'm sure you do.
And the, I'm not going to comment on the W P C A. But this commission is well versed in predetermination. It's well versed in FOIA regulations. It's well versed in procedures. At least annually, we have reviews with Attorney Gelderman. About correct procedures, we, we do training every year. I think as far back as this past January, I've been emailing the commission, which I normally don't do. But given the issues having to do with this application, just reminding the commissioners. So unless Attorney Gelderman advises me that I have to do this, I frankly have to decline. The commissioners know about recusal. They understand it.
Well, may I ask, what's the harm in putting these answers on the record?
It's insulting.
Well, I, I, I'm sorry, I'm doing my job based on really, if you look at the W P C A emails. Two people recused themselves who probably had the same training that you and the other commissioners did, and that didn't stop them. As you said, it there. Motions are running high, people reacted in real time in January and February. I'm just doing my job. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna obviously.
And I'm doing my job and the commissioners are aware of the rules of the road and they know that they would need to recuse themselves and they have read your letter.
Okay, so may, may I take it that your answer on behalf of the entire commission is none of, no member has. Would answer yes to any of those questions.
My, my, my answer is agree with that and my answer is that if any commissioner does have concerns having to do with that, then they should recuse themselves and you. You've posed that question to them already via your email and no one has recused themselves.
Okay, all right, then I will accept your ruling. Thank you. Lynn, could we have the first? Actually, the third, we can move to the third slide. That's not it. All right. That's the cover. Number three, please. There we go. Thank you. The property we're talking about is three point one acres at the corner of Weed and Elm. Very important fact in this case is that it's about nineteen hundred feet from the New Canaan Train Station. The existing use is a single family home built in the nineteen twenties. And a pool house built approximately nineteen sixty with a total square footage of ten thousand square feet approximately. The application is in three parts, which as the chair said, we are addressing together. But will require separate votes at the end of the hearings. You have the zoning regulation amendment to a new zone that we have labeled transit oriented, multi-family developments, multi-family zone or T O M Z. Rezoning of three point one acres to the new zone and site plan approval. Each of the three parts is under general statutes eight thirty G. Which I, I know you're familiar with, but I'll summarize for the public and for the record. Eight thirty G provides that if a proposed residential development will preserve at least thirty percent of the proposed units for forty years. For households earning in this case, at this time, approximately forty-six thousand to seventy-five thousand annually. Then the zoning commission may only deny the application if it receives evidence at a hearing. That the development plan will cause a quote substantial public health or safety concern unquote. And that concern must quote clearly outweigh the need. Unquote for additional lower cost units in the town and the region. And the health and safety concern must be determined as something that cannot be addressed by reasonable changes to the site plan. Just based on the comments that we've received so far, I would point out that the reasonable changes provision. Is an important affirmative obligation of the commission, the town staff and the peer reviewers. In short, you just can't say no, you, the obligation is to identify what changes or change or changes would address the concern. And I would respectfully note that the initial comments that we have gotten do not comply with this obligation. Hopefully we'll get, we'll get. Past that in later rounds of the reviews, but not so far. Process to date, confirmation that there are no wetlands on the site. It's no, there's no aquifer, there's no public water supply watershed. As you know, the W P C A application is in process. I would note, as I think I said last week. That the denial of that application will not halt or delay this process. We've checked the national diversity, natural diversity database with the Department of Environmental Protection. There are no endangered species to worry about. We responded to the fire marshal and the town engineers' initial comments last week with. Several with written responses and site plan revisions. And Mr. DeAndrea will summarize those for you. The proposed regulation is in the March thirty-first package at tab number five. I would note that the format and many of the sections are modeled on existing. New Canaan zoning regulation. So it's sometimes said that eight thirty G allows an applicant to completely ignore the zoning regulations. That's not true. We still have to follow planning and zoning and all of the, the, the good practices that. Are wrapped into planning and zoning and so the, there are sections in there intended to achieve that. You probably noted that there is no special permit proposed. Under a special permit, a zoning commission has discretion to deny or to impose limiting conditions. That is simply a process that is not compatible with eight thirty G review. There are several court cases that have adopted that view. And just so you, if you're interested in that subject, the memo from. Mr. Hoiler and myself on that topic is in the June fifteenth materials at tab nine. I would just say that the proposed purpose of the proposed regulation is to define with precision what can and cannot be built. And so that we can look within the four corners of the regulation and know what the rules are. It is, as you will see, if you've looked at it, it is a site. Specific regulation. I know that you have at least one of those already in your regulations, but. We did that because number one, no existing. New Canaan zoning regulation contains or even approximates the combination of. Land use and dimensional rules and affordability requirements needed for this redevelopment. We made it site specific, so the commission in considering. This application does not need to consider the applicability to other parcels in town. If perchance you like the regulation, you certainly have the discretion to make it more geographically applicable, but we did not see fit to. Put that task on you at this time. Again, the courts have backed us up on that. This spot zoning so-called is not. A, not a violation or I should say is a, is a permissible practice in an eight thirty G development. And also a site specific regulation helps with enforcement, a clear statement of what is allowed and not allowed. And I will say that I've been doing this for a long time, this model of a site specific regulation we've used in. Probably eighty or ninety towns over the past thirty years and it works very well. We have talked in the application about what I would call green, sustainable features and the pedestrian orientation. The development is walkable to the train station and downtown, which has the benefit of reducing vehicle miles traveled and carbon emissions. There are green features, amenities, energy efficient systems that our architect, Mr. Eisen will describe in his presentation. I mentioned that one of the factors in the eight thirty G review is the affordable housing need in New Canaan, just focusing on the town itself. On the Department of Housing's twenty twenty-one ten percent list, New Canaan has seventy-five hundred and fifty housing units. But only nineteen rental assistance, meaning a state rental assistance program, only five CHFA mortgages. And only twenty-one deed restricted units. You have a hundred and seventy-five assisted housing units, which I assume is mostly. Milport and Canyon Parish, but your total is two point nine one percent overall. Which ranks New Canaan a hundred and fourteenth among the hundred and sixty-nine towns after thirty-two years of the statute. Another indicator is that in the year two thousand, your percentage was one point eight. So at two point nine one, twenty-two years later, I think the, the word is relatively little progress. Lynn, if you could go to the next slide, please. Let me go through the proposed residential program. And. Get rid of that. Hundred and two units, forty-seven one bedrooms, fifty-five two bedrooms, eight of the fifty-five will have a den. Square footages for the one bedrooms will range from nine, nine sixty-nine to nine hundred and ninety-five square feet. And the two bedrooms to between a thousand fifty-one and eleven hundred and sixty-eight. Square feet. Very important point and, and something that I think is, there's a lot of misunderstandings and I don't expect the public to. Understand all of this, but things I will point out. The affordability plan has what we call schedule B. Which is required amenities, finishes and quality of every single unit in the building and each unit will have, will be identical. In that respect, each unit will be identical with regard to those amenities, finishes and quality. And we do that in part because with the thirty percent set aside of affordable units over time. Which are the affordable units can change if there's someone who goes over income or. And wants to stay in the unit. They can stay there and then the landlord has the obligation to make what's called the next available unit. Available on a, an affordable basis. So we make all the units identical so that there is that flexibility. As you'll hear, this is a sprinkler building NFPA code compliant. The market rate units, now I think you understand this is thirty percent of the units will be affordable, seventy percent will be market rate. Among that seventy percent. Seventy-one units, we expect the market rate rents to range from twenty-five hundred to almost six thousand dollars. There have been comments about the entire building is section eight, low income, not true. Seventy percent of the units, market rate, twenty-five hundred to almost six thousand dollars. The housing opportunity units are the incomes, maximum household incomes and the maximum rents are displayed on the screen. You can see that for the, the one bedrooms. The at sixty percent of median income, forty-six thousand, three hundred and five and for the one bedroom, I'm sorry. At eighty percent, sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and forty. And then you have the affordable, those are the maximum affordable rents net of utilities below it. The affordability plan and compliance with state statute requires that the units be dispersed. Geographically throughout the building and also among the unit types. So we have the same number within the one bedroom and the two bedroom category. The parking space ratio is just under one point eight spaces per unit. Compliant with both state standards and, and good practice. And then another important feature of the affordability plan is it has an affirmative. Fair housing marketing plan, which is required by state law. What that means is that the applicant is required to publicize. The availability of the units when they come online across the region to groups that are quote least likely to apply unquote. And as an aside, that is why this application, because of the affirmative fair housing marketing component. Is afforded the protections of the federal and the state fair housing acts. Now, I'm sure, I'm certain that one topic we will get into is why is this an appropriate location for a multifamily residential? The first is, as I mentioned, the proximity walking distance to the railroad station and the town center. It has, I'm going to summarize and say it has public sewer and public water. Obviously, with the, we're in the process of confirming the sewer, but I'm going to say it has public sewer and public water. It is proximate to Erwin Park, a very nice recreational amenity across the street. It's a large lot, three point one acres and there are ample distances east and north. To the adjacent properties. Now I realize this seventh, the owner of seven sixty-two across the street has said that. Measured the distance at a hundred and fifteen feet, but at least to the north and the south, the distances are. Significantly more than that. And there is a plan sheet that gives those distances. I will, I will note that we have done a so-called shadow study, which we have available. I didn't, I'm not going to show it because it's like watching grass grow, but. It, it does three seasonally. April, July and October analyses of the difference in the sun. Angles based on the, the height of the proposed building and basically. A very minor impact in the morning on the, the seven sixty-two Weed Street property, but no impact on any other. Property and we, if you'll make that available if you want to look at that. This is a street corner. It's Elman Weed has been described as a busy intersection. I guess depending on your definition of busy, I guess that's true. But that is, as Mr. Poland, Dr. Poland will explain, that is the traditional location of a multifamily use in an area of single family homes. You also hear from Dr. Poland that multifamily and single family should be regarded as compatible uses. They're both residential. And they have many of the same characteristics and they, one should not be considered anathema to the other. The proposed building coverage is on the three point one acre parcel is only three, twenty-six percent. Lynn, if you could go to the next slide, please. I'm sure we'll get into building height at forty-seven feet to the top of the roof. Forty-nine feet to the parapet, top of the parapet. The building height is several feet above the total building height of the one acre zone, not a huge amount, but several feet. And it's lower than Milport, which has a fifty-foot maximum and a lower than Canyon Parish at sixty-seven feet. And again, our architect will talk more about that. In the supplemental materials that we provided to you last week. We, as somewhat a analytical exercise, we asked a consulting architect, Mr. Hull. What is the maximum that can be built in terms of height and bulk? As of right in the one acre zone. Now on this property, of course, you have enough land to subdivide and have two houses. So at tab seven. Of those supplemental materials, he's provided you a conceptual representation of what could be done as of right. And you can compare that to the, the height and the bulk of what is proposed here. We believe the differences are not significant. We're certainly not at the stage of having designed, done construction level plans. To show compliance with the building code, but we have satisfied ourselves through consultation with a code consultant named Bruce Spiewak. That the design of the building can be made a building code compliant. And we also have the same view with regard to fire code compliance, both the fire safety and the fire access codes. So with that, I would like to turn the floor over to Dr. Donald Poland.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the commission. Can I get the next slide, please? One more, actually, gonna go. One more and then one more after that. Good evening. Once again, for the record, my name is Donald Poland. I'm direct managing director of planning and strategy for the firm of Goman York Property Advisors. And we are based at eleven thirty-seven Main Street, East Hartford, Connecticut. A little introduction of myself, I have over twenty years, twenty-seven years experience in planning. My consulting practice has spanned nineteen states and a hundred and fifty communities. I've been accepted as an expert witness in federal district courts and in state courts in the areas of land use planning, neighborhood redevelopment and community development. And I have extensive work, extensive experience working on housing and affordable housing, both for municipalities. And as my clients and for developers. The aim of my testimony tonight is to demonstrate that the proposed multifamily use and zone change are consistent with Canaan's. New Canaan's plan of conservation and development. Also to explain how New Canaan zoning regulations are exclusionary. And show how multifamily and single family housing are not incompatible uses. Next slide, please. So first, the P O C D, as you guys are well aware, it is a policy document that. Kind of guides the spatial organization and density of a community. Typically going through the process, and I know based on the process you went through for your plan, you identify the resources to protect, then the area is best suited for development. And then the infrastructures and facilities needed to support those developments. Next slide. So we did an analysis. Of your P O C D to make sure that, to determine whether or not this development is consistent with the P O C D. So I want to highlight some of the findings here. Your P O C D recognizes changes in the housing market. That there's a need for smaller housing units for more, that are more densely located in and near town centers. That if Kane, it says if Kane and can, New Canaan can find a way to respond to these market trends, it can diversify its housing stock. And that there's little doubt that outmigration of certain age groups, young professionals and older individuals. Are the result of insufficient housing accommodations. This application essentially. Plays off of those market trends. It aims at providing opportunities to diversify your housing stock. To provide sufficient housing accommodation. to provide sufficient housing accommodations and so forth, and especially as already noted in walking distance and proximity to your town center. Next slide. The P O C D also acknowledges the need for New Canon to provide for a diverse housing portfolio. It makes two primary recommendations in this area. One is to increase housing in and near downtown. This site is in and near downtown. And also to provide for workforce housing. Some of the specific recommendations related to those are additional housing choice and also that sites in the near downtown are best, best suited for higher density development based on the existence of public infrastructure there to support them. So we find that this application, the proposed multifamily and zone chain, provide additional housing choice, promote the development of vibrant downtown and help meet local needs, provides affordable housing options to those who work in the community or experience unplanned life changes as stated in the P O C D and provide more diversity in housing types, opportunities, choices and costs consistent with community conditions and constraints. Next slide. Here, the main point is to show that you have a conceptual sidewalk map within your P O C D. And it identifies radiuses or walking distance essentially to the train station. And the property, the subject property here tonight is within those radiuses. It's within that sidewalk plan area. And to the south there of this site, there already exists multifamily housing. So it's proximate to existing multifamily housing. So essentially, we find that this application forwards the objectives of smart growth of transit-oriented development and walkability. Next slide, please. I also reviewed the plan to make sure that it wasn't inconsistent with other policies. There's always the struggle saying it's consistent with the plan. We can't be consistent with every policy put forth in the plan. However, we can verify that we're not inconsistent with other policies. So a sample of those, that assessment here show that scenic resources, open space, historic resources, natural resources. In the case of all these other areas of the plan, we do not conflict with the recommendations put forth for those. So we are not inconsistent with other aspects of the plan. Next slide. So I want to talk a little bit about the land use, about land use as a system and also as a system of exclusion. Unfortunately, that's the case for many, if not most municipalities with the utilization of zoning, both intentionally and unintentionally. But the land use system, by that I mean the plan of conservation development, the zoning regs too often have been used as tools of social, economic and racial exclusion. Over the past half century, it's been well established that the powers to zone do not provide license to exclude socially, economically or racially, and they're not within the authority of protecting the general welfare. In Connecticut, for more than thirty years now, eight dash two of the general statutes and also eight dash twenty-three, the P O C D statutes have required zoning and planning to be inclusive. And that is such regulation shall encourage the development of housing opportunities, including multifamily. And that such regulation shall also promote housing choice and economic diversity in housing, including housing for both low and moderate income households. This is essentially the essence of eight dash thirty G, and the reason for the creation of eight dash thirty G is to ensure that communities provide for affordable housing. Next slide. Slide on my screen did not change. Thank you. Appreciate that. So eight dash two also was recently amended, as you guys, I'm sure are well aware, to affirmatively further the purposes of eight dash of federal fair housing. I'm sorry, my screen's gone beyond again. To the next slide. To affirmatively further the purposes of fair housing and also those recent amendments don't allow an application to be rejected. That's both special exception, that's special exceptions, site plans and zone. Don't change approvals based on character and income. So we also looked for barriers to multifamily residential and affordable housing in both the P O C D and zoning. And your P O C D is interesting that it actually has a very detailed discussion around a land use analysis of New Canon. And it reveals that ninety percent, ninety-seven percent of the land in the community has been developed or committed to different land uses, and it recognizes that that's mostly residential homes. I think it's important to be specific. That's mostly single-family detached residential homes on very large lots. It goes on to say that since almost all the land in New Canon has been developed or committed, growth or change in the future will most likely occur as the result of two things. It actually foreshadows this application. The first one is an occupancy of existing housing, changes in occupancy of existing housing units. Those are demographic factors and the change in our household structure. But then it goes on to say, the second reason, from redevelopment of existing property rather than from development of major new subdivisions and projects. It's foreshadowing the idea of redeveloping existing properties, which this application is. So with ninety-seven percent of land committed for future growth and the changes in occupancy, it is revealed that New Canon offers few, if any, opportunities for multifamily and affordable housing. Only two point seven percent of New Canon's housing is qualified as, was qualified as affordable in two thousand fourteen. Yet the P O C D actually did very little to confront the need for affordable housing. And the two thousand, the two thousand fourteen P O C D essentially skirts the issue by recognizing the need for affordable housing, but not putting forth specific strategies to actually address it other than to actually qualify for the moratorium. Next slide, please. So on the barriers, we also looked at we also looked at the zoning regulations. And this is where the planning stuff starts to meld with the zoning stuff. These the New Canon zoning regulations perpetuate and codify New Canon's land use patterns. And the fact that ninety percent of the land is dedicated already for development with little opportunities for other uses. Approximately two-thirds of New Canon's land is zoned to and for two and four acre, single-family detached houses. Nearly eighty percent of the land is zoned for one acre or more of single-family detached housing. Though half acre and one-third acre zones, the A and B residential zones account for approximately only five percent of New Canon's total land areas. In the apartment zone, including the P O M Z zone and the multifamily zone account for less than two percent of New Canon's total land area. The zoning, these zoning districts are so small that they actually leave very little, if any, opportunity for the development of multifamily or affordable housing. And then the Milport Housing Zone and the Canon Parish Housing Zone, the two zone zoning districts that explicitly allow for affordable housing are actually limited to a frontage requirement on the specific streets in which they are located, meaning you can't apply them elsewhere. Next slide, please. So ultimately, the plan of conservation development recognizes the need for affordable housing. Unfortunately, it does little to promote housing choice and economic diversity in housing or low, housing for low and moderate income households. It creates an illusion of addressing affordable housing when in fact the P O C D provides a well-planned effort to avoid addressing affordable housing. The zoning regs, the most powerful municipal tool for implementing the P O C D perpetuates that illusion by addressing affordable of addressing affordable housing by codifying provisions that appear to promote housing choice and economic diversity by allowing multifamily and affordable housing land uses, however, so constrained and restricted that it's near impossible to actually do it any other way than through eight dash thirty G. So unfortunately, we don't have a circumstance where I believe the regulations or the P O C D are forwarding the need or addressing the need for affordable housing. Next slide. I believe the following slide. Thanks. I want to talk a little bit about residential uses. And I think this is very important to the discussion because typically we think of, I think it's common for people to think of multifamily as something different than single-family. And yes, there are differences, but from a use perspective, they are both residential uses. So zoning was created out of the not just conditions of the industrial city. And we've mostly solved those issues. However, today, far removed from the industrial city, it's involved into a complex regulatory system. And land use, regulatory system of land use that over-conceptualizes differences in uses, exaggerates threats posed by density and intensity and over emphasizes the potential impacts on property values. The fact is, if we break this down into four ways of looking at any parcel or development, the first is use. There's no difference between a residential, a single-family residential and multifamily residential use, whether it's one unit or a hundred units, it's still the same use residences, people live in it. Density, there is a difference in density, increasing from one unit per acre, per three acres to thirty-three units per acre. And there is a difference in intensity, such things as height, as massing and also as site design to accommodate vehicles. And then in regards to property values, there's no negative impact on property values by similar uses. Residential uses do not negatively impact other residential uses, and I'll get back to this. Next slide. So understanding this and understanding kind of these four characteristics of development unfolds a better understanding. The change in density and intensity are nuanced and contextual. Density is subjective, it's a value judgment. There is no correct density for any communities. Communities are viable at multiple densities. That's why we see very low density and very high density communities. The fact is thirty-three units per acre is considered consistent with mid-rise suburban density, especially proximity, proximate to downtown. And the same is true with intensity. While intensity of site changes, height, massing, site design, nothing about these changes in intensity poses a threat to public health, safety and welfare. So on the right-hand side here, I cite to actually the Illustrated Book of Development Definitions, which you cite to in your zoning regs as a viable source for defining things. And it clearly shows us that mid-rise suburban areas densities of twenty to forty units per acre and mid-rise towns, thirty to fifty units per acre. So this is a reasonable density in the context of land use. Next slide. Please, thank you. And this isn't something new. Proximity of multifamily development and single-family residential development is actually fairly common and exists. This photo on the left is West Hartford, a vibrant, prosperous, wealthy desirable community where we see these historic stately, single-family homes on large lots, right next to a six-story apartment development. There's actually just peeking out there, there's another apartment building in the background. And on the right-hand side, we have a recent development where nearly a dozen lots were replaced by a four-story, two-hundred-and-sixty-unit multifamily development in the town of Bloomfield, still proximate to single-family residential. Next slide. So recognizing that the residents of New Canon do not live in fear of fire, panic or other dangers, nor that they suffer from a lack of adequate light, air or these are basic tenants to zoning and the protection of public health, safety and welfare. It's unreasonable to think that such changes from single-family to multifamily will harm public health, safety and welfare, disrupt the character of a district or diminish the value of properties. Actually, to believe such a claim, to believe or claim such a threat or harm is unfounded and simply emotional response to change. On the right-hand side of this slide, I show twenty years of academic and industry research from MIT, Harvard, University of Utah, National Home Builders and Virginia Tech University that consistently show that multifamily development does not negatively impact single-family development. The last bullet quoting says, "The research is clear, quote apartments pose no threat to surrounding single-family home values and fear of potential asset value loss among suburban homeowners is misplaced." These are academics speaking, not me. Next slide. So zoning has evolved into a complex system that's too often conflates density and use and intensity. Similar uses and differences in density and intensity are wrongly assumed to pose threats to the character of zoning district or property values. Contemporary zoning is part of a highly restrictive system of land use that unnecessarily seeks to protect against perceived threats to property. And the highly restrictive zoning system is a key driver of housing affordability issues and the need for affordable housing. Next slide. Ultimately, by making it hard to develop housing, we create a shortage of supply and inflate values of housing, create an affordability issue. So in summary, the P O C D recognizes that housing is desirable and expensive in New Canon, that there's a need to provide diversity of housing types, opportunities, choices and costs. That there's a greater interest in smaller housing units, more densely located proximate to town center. And that's areas near town center with public water and sewer are the best for higher density development. This development promotes appropriate balance of conservation development. It's a redevelopment, not a green field site that's conservation. It encourages a mix of moderate density development. It provides for additional housing opportunities, multifamily housing, and it diversifies New Canon's housing stock. It addresses insufficient housing accommodations for young professionals and aging populations and provides additional housing choice in and near downtown. I thank you for your time and I'll be available for questions at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Dr. Paul, and Mr. Eisen is next.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is John Eisen. I'm the managing principal of the Eisen Group. We are a multi-disciplined architecture, planning, development, consulting company headquartered in Washington DC with offices in Denver and in Seattle. I have been fortunate in my career to work in over twenty-five states and over seventy markets within those states. I have contributed to more than twenty-five thousand multifamily units that have been built. That's dozens and dozens of buildings. I've worked on numerous master plans for urban, suburban and rural communities. So I have a pretty strong knowledge of residential development and the diversity within affordable and workforce housing. We have done thousands of units of workforce housing and know quite well how to do it and keep it within the context and the framework of communities like New Canon. So thank you again for the opportunity to speak with you. Just to start, just a little bit about this site, it's a great site, the walking score, if you guys know about walk scores, is very high. This would be just below urban, meaning Manhattan, where people don't have cars, primarily use bikes, transit, walking, cabs, things of that nature. And we're just below that. It's an easy walk to the town. It's an easy walk to the train station. You can bike, you can also use your car. So it's in that hybrid. And it's a wonderful opportunity to embrace smart growth development principles that are being utilized throughout the country. There is significant shortage in certain housing types, and this fulfills that type of housing demand in addition to the workforce housing. So with that said, Weed and Elm, really nice intersection, we recognize that there is a need for some setbacks. So we paid close attention to the proximity of the building in relationship to the different properties. We've been looking at the access to the site and as well the amenities around the site plan. I'm going to try to use the cursor if you guys can see it. So working here off of Elm, we would come in into our site and we would have an opportunity to into our site and we would have an opportunity to do a drop-off and pickup right here at our front door. There is going to be a portco share uh, a fully compliant building with the Americans with Disability Act or the Federal Register from nineteen ninety. And we'll have a drop-off and a pickup area as well as visitor parking, as well as the ability to have people come and do drop-offs for food or for Uber or things of that nature. We also have some uh residual parking here off to the left side of the site. We have two access points into our parking garage, one right here and one right here. And our ability to park underneath the building will accommodate close to ninety spaces, which will give every unit pretty much the ability to have a car underneath the building and as well be able to accept the visitors. The site plan has had a lot of attention from a landscaping and lighting perspective. We are very cognizant of our neighbors and we will have a lot of foliage um along the perimeters of the property uh here. Um, along here and, and along this side. But in, in essence, these edges which are exposed to weed and now we'd like to make them more park-like setting, something that would be more accessible to the residents for both private and public use. So it's a very nice blend between figuring out what is personal for the property and what is open to the public. The sidewalks run adjacent to the property and we want to make that part of the community engagement. Next slide. Okay, I didn't advance here. Oh, there we go. Great. So we have um basically, as you heard, a forty-seven foot tall building with parapets in different heights up to forty-nine feet, but below what is acceptable uh based on, you know, your code. In, in that vein, we've got four levels of residential. And within that, we've got, you know, our normal back-of-house uses for fire, for pump, for electrical, for elevators, for lobbies and amenity spaces. All of these will be, you know, accessible for the tenant and property management company. Our floors two, three and floor as well as floor one will accommodate different housing types, and we'll go through that in a minute. Um, and then we have below the main level, uh partially buried subterranean parking structure. So what we're going to do is burn up around the perimeter of the building so that you're not going to be able to see that parking. But it will have open air access to make sure that it's, you know, fully safe and, and has the proper amount of exposure to open air for good ventilation. Next slide. So this slide in particular shows the diversity of the uses within the building. Um, you can see the yellow is the common area, the lobby where you have access to the elevators, uh stairs and the different corridors going to the units. But you can also see the diversity of unit types from one bedroom to two bedroom, but also the workforce housing. The workforce housing is evenly distributed throughout the floor plan. It makes a, a, a very useful uh and efficient floor plan, our core factors for any architects or engineers who know about core factors. It's an incredibly efficient building, fully fire suppressant, uh, meeting all of NFPA code requirements, I B C requirements, state of Connecticut requirements. Next page. The typical floors above floor one are again pretty typical and similar. They're all going to be duplicate. We're trying to stack the units to create good efficiencies. That helps also with our sustainability program, which is to try to minimize differentiating between the units so that we're having some duplicity, we're able to be more efficient with the materials that we use, the proximity of these materials, working with low VOCs, which is, you know, basically noxious fumes. So there's a lot of sustainable features, both in the site for uh stormwater, lighting as well as in the building. So we're going to pay special close attention to the different sustainable features. And that will also be backed up in our mechanical systems and any of the appliances within the unit. We'll certainly be following Energy Star principles. Next slide, please. So this section goes both directions through the site. You can see the height being anywhere from forty-two up to forty-seven feet. You can see the partially buried garage and the interior courtyard here has the ability to help with our stormwater management and manage our traffic for drop-off and pickup at the portco share, which is centered right here. But you can see the four levels of residential with a common corridor above the garage. And then you can also see the portco share in this direction, uh this longitudinal direction as well. Next slide. Talking about our garage, this will show you how the garage is functioning um as you enter and exit through these two portals. Here, we're also utilizing the corners of our buildings to accommodate bike storage, bike racks, things of that nature, water meter rooms, trash rooms, elevator machine rooms, electrical uh machine. There's a lot that has to go into these buildings. We're at a conceptual level, but we know quite well what's required to get into this building. Next slide. Okay, we're going to be switching, but before I head out, let me just say a couple of things about the architecture of the building, the use of materials. We're going to be keeping within the context of New Canaan as we have in other projects in the state of Connecticut. Uh, it's a, a privilege to work in such a beautiful town, and I want to make sure you realize that we will be paying special close attention to the types of details and vernacular that exist within your community. The other thing is it's important to recognize it's a registered architect and more than twenty states we take very seriously when we uh promote a building of any kind that we're being mindful of the state regulations, national regulations from NFPA to I B C and so forth. So it's our opinion, this building will more than meet the requirements within the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Eisen. Next is up is uh Mr. DeAndrea.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Leonard DeAndrea. I am a Connecticut professional engineer and have been one since nineteen eighty-seven. Uh, the firm, DeAndrea Surveying and Engineering P C operates under the umbrella of Rock of V DeAndrea Inc. You're probably familiar with both names, and that goes all the way back to nineteen forty-seven, when my father actually started the firm. Uh, we were, this is actually a good s- uh slide to keep up here for now. Uh, we were tasked with preparing a detailed topographic survey of the subject property and then to provide a site design that would address site grading, vehicle circulation, um, manage stormwater runoff such that the development will not cause an adverse impact on adjacent properties or to the public sewer system or to local stormwater runoff patterns. And it's our professional opinion, as I stand before you tonight, that we've achieved these goals. And as I continue, I'll touch on briefly each aspect of design to show you how we accomplish those goals. The architect just presented the building to you, and I want to again point out that it includes an underground parking garage. Um, that's great for us because that takes away a lot of the parking debt under other types of projects. Shopping Center is a good example, but we have to put so much of this parking outside and uncovered. Uh, the parking garage will actually provide or take care of about fifty percent of total, total parking provided. And I'll get into um those details a little bit more as we continue. Sanitary sewer. We know now the subject property is within the public sanitary sewer service limits and is serviced by a private six-inch tight pipe sanitary sewer collector. The collector currently serves this property and four others through a shared easement. And we have performed net sewer conveyance calculations that confirm the collector has excess capacity for accepting the peak rate of effluent during uh of this discharge from the proposed apartment building. When I talk about peak, it's one thing to say this, this um apartment would generate so much gallons per day, but we take that and we, we add a factor of safety to it to increase that because we know there are, there are peaks morning and usually in the evening. And at the request of the Department of Public Works, we also confirmed through flow metering and video inspection that the public sewer line running in and along Elm Street also has sufficient capacity and that through the video inspection, there are no impeding flaws with the sewer main that compromises conveyance. Also based on a memo issued recently by A E Com to Department of Public Works dated March fourteenth of this year, uh, A E Com noted forty percent of the designed treatment capacity remains at the sewage treatment plant. Therefore, the plant has ample capacity for the flows as summarized in our sewer, sewer uh report as submitted. Our, our present design, let's see. Our present design looks to separate the new building from the private collector by relocating the sewer lateral more directly to the public sewer uh in Elm Street. This is very simply accomplished by adding a hundred and thirty-five feet of plastic pipe, tight joint, watertight uh west of the existing and most westerly sanitary sewer manhole in Elm Street by adding one more manhole. We have proposed this because it is good common sense design. Doing so will not stress or strain any Department of Public Work resources since there is virtually no maintenance required within a new sewer manhole or for a hundred and thirty-five feet of tight joint plastic pipe. After that pipe is installed, it will be air tested, it will be video inspected and usually, I assume that New Canaan is the same way, it won't even be accepted by New Canaan until we demonstrate and prove that this sanitary sewer line has been installed in accordance with their specifications. Of course, other services are required, and in this case, electric and communication would be brought in from the overhead service lines running along Weed Street. And right in front of the property on Elm, we have water lines, and so we will uh be bringing in domestic and uh fire service lines. Talking a bit about now the drainage management, um as we stated earlier, there's a parking garage for slightly over fifty percent of the proposed parking. This, of course, limits the impact of having to provide additional impervious areas to accommodate a greater number of exposed uh parking spaces. As the design and circulation uh evolved, we encouraged a site design goal that uses low-impact uh development techniques, lid and best management practices, B M Ps to the greatest extent feasible. We achieved that goal by including our drainage management design, five uh permeable pavement areas. And these are, if you're looking at the site plan, these are typically shaded. Uh, there are five permeable pavement areas that will infiltrate a percentage of the stormwater runoff directly through the pavement to a reservoir below. There are four gallery infiltration systems spread around the property so as not to concentrate them in any, any one given area. There are two infiltration beds placed underneath uh the driveway in two different sections. And then I think saving the best for last, because this is something we're all trying to encourage more and more US homeowners and, and um, larger developments, uh rain gardens. In this case, we have two of them. We have a very large one on the north end of the handled land to the north, and then we have one in the courtyard. And using these lid and B M P techniques, we have been able to limit the number of driveway catch basins to just two, and they're trench drains. And they're there because uh we have them at the, the entrances to the parking garage on the east side, on the south and the north. So just two basins. So wildly too, well, most of the driveway runoff then will in uh sheet flow into these two rain gardens. And we've designed the gradients such that that will work very well, very little maintenance in doing so. The rain gardens will be well vegetated so as to be a design amenity. In fact, Lynn, could you go to slide thirty-one maybe for this? Yeah, backwards, the rendering. It just shows, it just shows a little bit better. So if you can pick up on that, the rain gardens are not uh a depression full of sand, they're not grass, they can be well vegetated. You can see around here, they have fringe plantings. So rain gardens will be well vegetated so as to be a divine, uh, excuse me, a design amenity, attracting wildlife and providing nutrient uptake that in all will further polish the stormwater runoff. The additional extensive landscaping around the building and throughout the green areas will also help to minimize stormwater runoff and protect against soil erosion long-term, while also additionally providing wildlife enhancement. The roof in the tan area there, that is uh all being collected and it will be uh discharged to four different um subsurface infiltration systems. Again, there's four of them, so it's not in one location, it's spread around the building. In combination, we have been able to provide a stormwater management design that treats, infiltrates, retains and detain stormwater such that we can boast the reduction, the peak rate of discharge for all storms analyzed through the one-hundred-year event. And a net volume reduction leaving the property for all, all storms as well compared to existing site conditions. The storms analyzed are the more typical one-year, two-year, five-year, ten-year, and we get into the bigger storms at twenty-five, fifty, a hundred-year events. And we're looking at uh rainfalls of two and a half inches to as much as nine inches. Our design follows the drainage design guidelines of New Canaan D P W and the two thousand and four Connecticut Stormwater Quality Manual. Uh, sticking with this slide here, uh retaining walls. Want to state for the record on this development that retaining walls, although there are a few required and they're not very tall, uh, they'll be comprised of poured concrete walls and then faced with a stone veneer. Uh, there's a couple of areas on the existing stone walls that will be infilled and those, those would be infilled to match the existing wall. Uh, trash management and recycling. If you go on the east side coming in on the driveway, uh just past the building, there'll be a, an area, thank you very much, right there. And that will be enclosed. And the way that would work is the vehicle would come in, drive up to that enclosed trash uh area, roll out one of the, the bins and load that into the, the truck and then back around or circle around and, and head right back out. So very easy to do. Uh, snow, the same thing we've designed is with this loop and with the rain gardens, the idea is to blade it through so that you leave it. Uh, there's plenty of great sunlight exposure, the way this design is, is oriented, and then that will melt. And typically, and this is again something we encourage, with permeable pavement, will disappear into the pavement or as design will sheet flow into one of the two rain gardens. We have uh continued to work with D P W, they're very accommodating. Uh, we have submitted obviously our, our design materials. We have responded to one set of comments so far, and I know that is an ongoing process. And we have made her, we will and, and continue to make herself available to staff to answer any questions uh in addition to the subsequent responses we've made to date. Uh, working with the design team, we're constantly working with the traffic engineer and comments from other departments, uh tweaking the design, making the driveway entrance wider to accommodate emergency vehicles easier. And I'm sure that will continue on with tweaks as we go as well. And then um maintenance. So you take a development like this, certainly there's landscape areas, there's driveway areas, and this is a drainage management plan. So we've put together an operation and maintenance plan that will go with this development. And because it's an apartment complex, they'll be maintained by one company and they'll be charged with limiting what they do with fertilization, making sure that the simple structures that we do have for drainage are well maintained and operational. During construction, the um um project site engineer will be responsible for periodically inspecting the construction to confirm that the system components are being implemented in accordance with approved, approved plans. And also uh as part of our design package, there is a sedimentation erosion control plan. That's a temporary sedimentation road erosion uh control plan that goes into place to uh enclose the site and to make sure that we don't adversely impact the streets and our adjacent neighbors. So I conclude by stating that we are pleased the applicant has supported our design goals and is our professional opinion that the site design we have developed will provide water quality and manage stormwater runoff such that the development will not cause an adverse impact on adjoining properties or local drainage patterns or to public health and safety. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. Mr. Soli, our traffic engineer will go next.
Good evening, uh members of the commission. For the record, my name is Kevin Soli. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut uh with Soli Engineering. Um, office is located at five oh one Main Street in Monroe, Connecticut. I also hold the designation as a professional traffic operations engineer. Um, so if you could proceed to slide number nine. Thank you. Um, so our office conducted a, a traffic impact uh analysis for the proposed development, uh just to orient everyone. Um, uh, as the commission's aware, the site is located at the uh intersection of Weed Street and Elm Street. You can see the proximity to the, uh, you know, downtown, the train station, um, which, which we believe obviously makes this a very uh, uh appropriate site for the proposed development. Uh, next slide, please. Next slide, please.
As a part of preparing our traffic impact study, the first thing we want to do is understand how the existing roadway network operates. So we actually look at what our existing traffic volumes are. We looked at available traffic information for the area, and given with the COVID-19 pandemic, we have to take special care when we're looking at our traffic volume. So we actually looked at available traffic volume from 2016. We then conducted new traffic counts in September of 2021, and we actually compared those volumes. The volumes in 2016 were actually higher than that from 2021, so we actually used those 2016 base volumes, then grew those at half a percent growth to accommodate just other background growth, which may have happened independently from the COVID-19 pandemic, and we established those to be our existing volumes utilized as part of our analysis. In addition to looking at turning movement counts at Elm Street and Weed Street, we also installed an automatic traffic recorder, which are those tubes you see across from driveways, which both capture traffic volumes but also traffic speeds, and those are important consideration as we look at intersection site distance and safety analysis as part of our efforts. So we looked at the existing traffic counts or the grown counts from 2016 to understand how the existing roadway network operates. We then look at anticipated trip generation for the proposed development based on trip generation rates established by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. That is an industry standard set of trip generation rates which are based on both national and regional studies, those are accepted by the Connecticut Department of Transportation, and those are what we use to establish what are, what trips we would expect to be generated from the development, and then we then place those trips onto the network to understand our potential impact to the surrounding area. We utilized Trip Generation Rates Version 10 based on ITE, which were the most available, most recently available at the time of our study. And with those, with that analysis, the proposed 102-unit development will generate a total of 37 trips during the AM peak period, so that's 10 trips entering and 27 trips leaving during that AM peak period, which is that peak period between 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM, which is, you know, the most conservative time to apply those trips to the network. We then also looked at the weekday PM peak period, so peak hour between 4:00 and 6:00. And during the PM peak hour, we anticipate the total trips generated to be 45 trips. It's 27 trips entering and 18 trips exiting. Now, I'd like to point out, we did receive comments from the town's peer review consultant. As Attorney Hollister mentioned, we're working on a comprehensive response to those comments, but I do want to point out, one of the comments was regarding trip generation. And subsequent to our initial authoring of our study, they did release new Trip Generation Rates Volume 11 by the ITE. When we actually look at those trips and compare the two, they've actually added an additional variable for developments of this type, and that includes specific rates for developments with proximity to transit. So ITE defines that as a development within a half a mile, so 2,500 feet, give or take. As mentioned previously, this project is within 1,900 feet of the train station, so it actually, those rates would be most applicable, and I'd say that the, for the AM peak period, those trips would be estimated to be the same as that 37 total trips, and then the afternoon peak, it's actually a substantial reduction to accommodate the proximity to transit. So while the Trip Generation 10 identified a potential trip generation of 45 trips during the afternoon peak hour, the new rates would actually establish a total trips of only 30 trips from this development during that afternoon peak period. So we will be providing a comprehensive response, but I just wanted to point that out, that actually with the new trip generation rate, this actually, and you take into consideration proximity to transit, checks leave and less trips that would be estimated to be developed, to be generated from this proposed development. Actually, if you can go to the next slide, please. So this slide does summarize our proposed trip generation, which again was based on the rates from 2010. So additionally, once we have our trip generation, we then assign those trips to the network, and we analyze all of the approaches for stop sign controlled and our proposed driveway. So under existing conditions, the westbound approach for Elm Street is approximately, operates at approximately level service E with a 43 seconds of delay and a D, 25 seconds of delay during the afternoon peak. With our trips assigned onto the network, we would expect a very small degradation in, or increase in delay for that westbound approach by approximately seven seconds, and that was actually based on the old trip gen, so we actually, when we reapply, I'd likely assume that would potentially stay the same, and then it does maintain the same level of service during the afternoon peak period. The balance of the intersections analyzed, our site driveway and Elm Street and Grove, those all maintain acceptable levels of service without any degradation, and our proposed development would not adversely impact the surrounding roadway network from a traffic standpoint. In addition to understanding the operating conditions and levels of services, we also look at, we also do a safety analysis. We analyzed four years of crash data in this area and identify that there were only four accidents identified through this area. We've also had follow-up conversations with the police department, and they've also confirmed that they do not see this as an accident-prone area or a, you know, problematic area from a traffic standpoint, so we do not believe we'd have any adverse impact from a safety standpoint with this proposed development. We also look at site distances for our driveway. Now, there's been some comments regarding where our driveway is located. That driveway location was designed in a way so that we could ensure adequate site distance, looking both east and west exiting our driveway, and those site distance were established based on actual empirical data for speed, because we want to make sure that the site distance provided meets what the actual traveling speed is on the roadway. We know that a posted speed limit doesn't necessarily equate to how fast people drive, so that's one of the important components that we look at. So we did, we installed our ATRs, we determined what that 85th percentile speed is, and we've designed our driveway accordingly to ensure that we have adequate site distance, looking both to the east, which is towards downtown, and then to the west, which is toward the stop sign controlled intersection. And our report and our figures substantiate that we do provide those appropriate site distances. It'll give the commission some additional comfort. This project, as it does have 102 proposed units, it does meet the threshold to require additional review by the Connecticut Department of Transportation and the offices of the State Traffic Administration, so this will be processed through their regulatory review process as well, so we will be submitting to them. Go to the next slide, please. Additionally, as part of our analysis, we conducted a truck turning analysis of the site to ensure that there was adequate room for the circulation for emergency vehicles. What we did is we contacted the New Canaan Fire Department, understood their largest vehicle that could potentially visit the site, and we modeled that, those turning movements. So we have both figures included in our report that depict both entering vehicles and exiting vehicles. We've been able to ensure that the site's designed to accommodate those, the largest possible emergency vehicle that can navigate the site. I'll say, you know, there was also some comments regarding trash vehicles and things like that, we can certainly provide additional figures depicting how all those vehicles would be able to navigate the site, however, the emergency vehicle with a fire from the fire department would certainly be the largest vehicle, and since that is a single unit truck in terms of the, you know, how that vehicle moves through the site, that would be the most conservative from an analysis standpoint. Additionally, I'd like to, you know, Colleen Byrne from my office did have a conversation with Deputy Chief John DiFederico regarding the proposed project. He did confirm that there's no safety concerns or accident patterns that would be problematic for him in this area. We discussed the rapid flashing pedestrian beacon in the crosswalk on the north side of Weed Street, which was recently installed. As we've mentioned, we are proposing a crosswalk along, across Elm Street to allow for safe passage to the sidewalks on the south side of Elm Street to again provide that pedestrian connectivity towards downtown. You know, there were some comments and questions regarding a secondary emergency egress onto Weed Street. I'll say that as part of our response, our team is evaluating that as a potential response to some of the comments raised by the town planner and the police and fire departments. So in summation, again, our proposed development will not cause any adverse public health or safety impacts, and we do not anticipate any substantial or impact from traffic operating conditions, given the proposed size of the development and anticipated trip generation with that development. So with that, I'll pass it on to Mary Blackburn from my office to discuss landscaping.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Mary Blackburn. I'm a professional landscape architect in the state of Connecticut with Soli Engineering Offices at 501 Main Street in Monroe, Connecticut.
You may have to speak up a little more when we get closer.
So I'm going to speak to the rendering, I believe the landscape plan is the next slide, but this kind of more clearly depicts the landscaping. Can you see my mouse there, my pointer?
Which slide is that?
Forty-four. So as you enter, okay, I'll describe, as you enter the driveway, on the right-hand side there, you'll see a, we proposed a flowering dogwood tree. This is one of 18 trees proposed in the development. As you continue along the driveway on the right-hand side, we have a mixed hedge of junipers and native ornamental switchgrass. And as you continue further, there's actually an existing evergreen, mature evergreen tree hedge that we're preserving, kind of from where the dumpster is north, and you can see the shadow, they're quite large there, kind of mimicking the property line there. In the parking area in the back, as Lynn had mentioned, in the center, there is a proposed rain garden, and there's also a proposed rain garden in the center of the courtyard there. Those will be planted with a New England erosion control restoration mix, which is a seed mix that's specifically designed for basins. That'll be like maintained just by mowing once a year, and the, around the kind of edge to define that, we've proposed native shrubs to just kind of give it a cleaner look at the very edge of the parking. And we've done the same in the courtyard area. In the other landscape islands surrounding the parking, we have overstory trees, deciduous overstory trees, and they are planted with shrubs. On the kind of northwest side of the building, further down, to the left, yep, that we have a hedge of arborvitis, a tall evergreen tree, which will grow to about 30 to 50 feet tall. And then on the facade of Weed and Elm Street, we provided a mixed foundation planting of evergreens and deciduous shrubs and ground covers. And then on the interior of the courtyard, we've also provided planted shrubs, evergreens, deciduous shrubs, ground covers between the building facade and the parking, and in that area, in that area, we've also provided, not, the two overstory trees are actually next to the rain garden, but closer to the building, we're proposing understory flowering trees, just to beat more in scale with the building. And I should also note that 82% of the plantings are natives or native cultivars. And then if you go to the next slide, I have two slides. So this was just the landscape plan, but it's much easier to see on the rendering. So the next slide is the lighting plan. So for the site, we've provided all dark sky compliant LED fixtures, and we're at all the property lines, we are at zero foot candles. We have two different height pole fixtures that we've used, it's the same fixture, just two different heights, one's 12 foot and one is 16 foot. The 12-foot fixtures are just used closer to the building and actually at the driveway entrance. Yep. And then all the other fixtures will be the 16-foot pole fixtures. We have 50 path lights, and those are to help define the barrier between the parking and the courtyard area and kind of along the driveway entrance. And then we have two recessed lights in the portico share at the main entrance. We've also specified seven wall pack fixtures at entry and egress points and at the two garage entrances, kind of the end camps there. And that covers it for the landscape and lighting. We'll be available for any questions appropriate time. Thank you.
For the record, Tim Hollister, and I will finish our initial presentation by talking about the changes in Connecticut Land Use Law in the 2021 session of the legislature. Your town attorney has provided a very comprehensive memo about 830G, but I would urge you, if you don't, if you've not received it already, to get a copy of Public Act 21-29 and perhaps engage Attorney Geldman to explain those requirements, because in this application, they're very much at the center of what your obligation is, and if you're not familiar with the obligation, you will have a tough time complying with it. And the reason I bring this up is one of the themes, recurring themes that we saw, at least in emails that have been posted on the commission's website, is that the applicant is just trying to exploit a loophole in 830G. The moratorium expired, there's a temporary window, and we drove through that window. Well, not correct. The legislature in its wisdom in 2021 amended state law, the Zoning Enabling Act, not 830G, the Zoning Enabling Act, the basic statement of powers of zoning commissions for the entire state of Connecticut in at least in three ways that are relevant to this application. The first one Dr. Poland mentioned, the character of the town, quote unquote, in the sense of preserving the status quo of large lots and expensive homes has been eliminated as a relevant criteria in zoning. You cannot deny an application to preserve the character of the town in that sense. Second, the Zoning Enabling Act provisions about zoning regulations specifically was changed from a may to a shall, and the shall says that zoning regulations must promote economic diversity in housing, housing choice, and multifamily, and those were made mandatory where they were previously permissive. And the third, and I'll, you know, I'll mention this, but I'll also confess, this is a first in the nation provision, so we don't have court cases that actually spell out its meaning, but zoning regulations must now affirmatively further, that's quote unquote, the purposes of the Federal Fair Housing Act. What that means is that zoning regulations must identify and either mitigate or eliminate economic and racial segregation, either as an intent or an effect of zoning regulations, and certainly large lot, single-family zoning or regulations that do not, either do not promote or effectively hinder the development of multifamily housing are obviously what the legislature had in mind. So I just urge you to bear that in mind, again, maybe engage Attorney Geldman to explain those to you, because this is not just 830G anymore. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we're at just about 80 minutes. I like it when the trains run on time, and so that will, I will stand down with our initial... And so that will, I will stand down with our initial presentation and proceed as you see fit. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hollister. Commissioners, as well as Planner Abney, Attorney Geldman, Mr. Kingsbury, Mr. Thompson, Chief Bassett, Fire Marshal Payne, Engineer Coplet. As feel free to join in with questions. Commissioners, we've heard from a number of presenters. I think maybe what we do is whoever would like to kick off with the questioning, I assume you want to question a specific person. Maybe what we try to do is somebody can kick it off, you pick your specific person, and then we'll try to focus on that person's area of presentation. Of course, we could move around, but questions?
I'll start.
Go ahead, Mr. Chris.
Question regarding the landscaping, maybe I could have the landscape architect come podium, please.
Mary, won't you come up? Podium. And just speak up, Mary, as best you can.
Yes.
Yes, I was looking through the proposed plant schedule that you had in submission, had a couple of questions on it. You mentioned natives, and I just went through from the first one down. Not necessarily everyone.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I can specify.
You mentioned there, it starts off with ginkgo trees.
Yes.
They're from, they're Chinese, they're not
Correct.
local. And they do have some odor issues that they can. But it's certainly not a native tree. And in the state plan of conservation development, as well as our town, we encourage native plants and also encourage provide habitat and food for fauna and insects and pollinators and so forth, which this would not seem to qualify.
Yeah, so you're correct, that is not one of the eighty percent of the natives, that tree. You know, we'd be glad to look at another species, but that one was really selected. Speak about natives and we try to use natives whenever we can, but really inside of a parking lot, sometimes native trees aren't really the best choice, and they aren't as well suited as some other species in that condition. There's certainly natives that we can look at choosing, but ginkgos are actually chosen because they're, you know, well suited for drought and salt. They don't have large leaves, so there's not a lot of leaf litter. And actually, the females of that plant are the one that have the fruit that has the odor, but that is, those ones aren't available in nursery trade specifically for that reason. But we can certainly look at other native options.
And so, ma'am, the, given the placement that really it's going to be harmful to native plants, you said it wouldn't be?
Not harmful, they just sometimes aren't the best suited for those conditions.
And then this one was fujaplicana, it's a western red cedar. Again, this is eastern North America, not Western North America. So I'm just wondering why this was chosen.
So that's an arborvitae, you're probably all very familiar with it. It's one of the best screening evergreens and one of the most frequently used because it's well suited in terms of its size. A lot of evergreens get quite large and, you know, in a landscape situation, they're a great hedge, they're very dense. Some other evergreens, you know, towards the bottom of the tree, they can get a little bit open. But these are very dense and they form a great hedge, which is why they're why we used. We, but again, we can look at eastern red cedar is also a good option. That's a native.
Yeah, it says the height is up to ten feet.
Oh, no, there's different varieties of arborvitae, the arborvitae. Oh, that's the installation, that's the size of installation, but they will grow thirty to fifty feet tall.
But it's a western tree, it's not a.
It's not a native, no.
I was also looking at the cornice, the dogwood, which is parkusa, which is an Asiatic variety.
Yes.
Not a eastern dogwood that we
Correct.
Have in your caden frequently.
There are, yes, there are native dogwoods and there are Asian dogwoods. And actually, the one we specified is from Rutgers. They did a hybrid between the native and the non-native version. And this, it actually just has better disease resistance than the native variety, so we can certainly switch to the native, but you know, the Rutgers variety is well-used because it has better disease resistance.
Also, there was a green anthus, which is a French tree, just New Jersey to Florida, I guess. And of course, we're north of New Jersey, so it's nearby, but not quite, no quite New England.
For a native, correct, yes.
And the stuartia, another tree, it's Gaffanese, I believe.
Yes.
A New England tree.
Yeah, and there's two of those. So, you know, as I said, we try to strive for most natives, but you know, there are some on the site that either for their size or ornamental value, we incorporate.
Don't want to go too much longer, but looking at the aronia, which is a choke cherry, you can make jelly out of that one, I know.
Yeah, yeah, that's a native.
And button bush, yes, Eastern United States. They tend to be more favored by, with wet woods and bog plants. I'm wondering, is this, this could be on a wetland, since it seems to be more to a wetland type of installation?
Not a wetland, but in the rain garden, kind of along the border. So, you know, there'll be snow storage in there and with it detaining the stormwater, we want to make sure that we chose plants that are sometimes found in wetlands because they're well-suited to the wet conditions and also the drought conditions, because obviously, it's not always going to be wet.
As far as the plants that are purchased from a nursery, assuming they're purchased from nursery, plant nursery, okay, you don't grow them yourself.
No.
Many of them are, can be sprayed with neonicotinoids. Is that something you think about? Are they going to be sprayed?
Yes, and you know, in dealing with the nurseries, that's really something that they've gotten away from, given all the research to the, you know, harmful side effects. So it's not something that's done as frequently, but there are certainly nurseries, native nurseries, especially that, you know, you can, you can find locally that are more aware of that.
So there's a possibility that some of the plants may have, maybe sprayed with pollinator unfriendly insecticides?
It would be something you'd have to, we'd have to work with the nurseries on, but typically, nurseries, I believe, have gotten away from the neonicotinoids.
And also, also in the planner's memo, there were some comments regarding borders and the height of some of the plants on the edges of the property, and they seemed on the low side as opposed to the high side. When if you could
Yes.
share some comments with us, please.
So I can go on the kind of plan here and show you. On the right side of the driveway, kind of on that easterly border, we have the juniper, which get to be about ten to twelve feet tall, mixed with a native ornamental grass, and that variety gets to be that we're specifying the totem pole. Panicum brugatum get to be five to six feet tall.
I guess I just make the comment that one of the things our commission has often been sensitive to is, you know, promoting quality of life, which is not just human life, but also wildlife, which is on which we depend. And plant installations can have significant effect on that for good or ill. And we have tended in many cases to look towards not only native plants with certain sizes, depending on screening and so forth, we're putting that aside, but also plants that are helpful and supportive of pollinators and wildlife. We certainly don't want to have, you know, berman
Right.
around or anything like that, but
No, the birds.
birds and pollinators and so forth, they have a place to nest, breed, eat, live, and so forth. And so choice of plants that can be helpful to that tends to be particularly positively received by at least this commission in the past. So I'll just make that comment. And, Mr. Chairman, I'm done with my questions for the moment.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have a question for the traffic engineer, Mr. Soli.
Well, do we, could we, what I try to do is keep it to one person at a time?
Sure, sure.
Yeah. Yeah, please, please.
I would have a question from Ms. Blackburn, so that's
Sorry.
That's okay. That makes sense. You mentioned light poles, I think you said of twelve, some twelve, some sixteen feet.
Yes.
Will they at night, the light be visible to residential homes that surround the property?
So at the property line, we've modeled a photometric plan with all the light fixtures that are proposed. And at the property line, we're showing zero foot candles. So actually, at all the property lines, except kind of right on Elm Street, right at the entrance there, there's a little area where it's above, but that's just limited to Elm Street.
But there's a difference, sorry, this is Dan Radman, there's a difference between foot candle readings at the property line and actual perceived illumination from adjacent properties.
Correct.
Will there be perceived illumination from these poles?
With the screening that we're providing, you may see the light, but again, most, you know, municipalities and regulations, the only really way to measure that is through the foot candle level. So that's what we provided, zero foot candles, the property line.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead. Finish what you're gonna say. Oh, I'll just kind of expand on that. So all the fixtures are dark sky compliant, so there is no uplight. They're all, you know, full cutoff and, and that helps limit light pollution.
Okay, so my question is, in the proposed regulation written for zoning on this site, it says that existing trees twelve inches or greater in caliper shall be preserved in the site plant to the extent feasible. Because I'm only looking on a small screen, I haven't been able to identify that. Could you point out where, if any trees are being preserved?
So we do have, I don't have it on a slide here for you, but we do have, we do have a tree plan, which highlights which trees will be preserved and which will be removed, that is sheet two point six two. In your
Do you have any idea how many trees are being preserved? I mean, ballpark?
So we're preserving one at the northwest corner of the parking area, and then the existing mature evergreen hedge on the east side of the property across from the parking area that follows the property line roughly there, those will all be preserved. And then there are street trees along Weed Street that are being preserved as well.
Okay. And then the other question I had, someone kind of mentioned it earlier.
Where are you?
Sorry, gotta hang up.
Where are you?
We'll just give it, all right, just go ahead. I heard the hangup. So we were talking about the, again, the regulation talks about a four-foot landscape buffer that will be provided adjacent to each property line. I heard you talk a little bit about what's happening on the east side of the parcel. When I'm looking at the map I see on the screen, what's happening on that small segment on the north side? Because I don't really see any landscaping there other than grass.
On the north side, I believe there's an existing stone wall and fence along that property. But currently, just grass is proposed there. We do need some areas for snow storage as well, so.
Okay, so but then that doesn't comply with what's written here in the regulation that there'll be at least four feet of landscape buffer along the property lines.
Yeah, and we can certainly add that there too, in our revisions.
Those are my questions, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else?
How much of this property is, would you estimate is impervious surface? Based on that drawing in front of us, I would guess it's roughly fifty percent pavement, thirty percent building. Would you say it's about fifteen percent grass?
So I believe the engineer may have those exact numbers for you. I know that some permeable pavement was used. But I don't have those numbers in front of me.
What's the setback from the building, both to Weed Street and Elm Street? I just looked at the building department's letter, and it said without any measurements, he was unable to comment on this. So I just wondered whether we had those setbacks.
Thirty.
Impervious surface.
I believe thirty on the setbacks, but those should be on the engineering plans as well. And we can add them to our landscape plans quite easily, but.
Commissioner, Mr. DeAndrea can give you those numbers.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Where, where is the planting plan? You could, this is insufficient, I can't.
Scroll to the next slide, please, and that is the planting plan. It's just sometimes hard to decipher when it's black and white.
I guess my question is, is there something, this just strikes me as inadequate?
Oh, I'm sorry, in what way?
It doesn't give a decent visual of what your landscaping will actually look at, look like.
Did you want to see like photos of the plants or?
No, I'd like to see a better rendition of the planting plan that showed, that gives us a better idea of what the screening will actually look like.
Okay, we can, I can show you pictures of the plants that we're proposing, if that's kind of what you're looking for.
I'm not talking so much about the plants, but the entire plant, just a better rendition of the planting plan to give us a better sense of
A rendered, a rendering. Versus black and white?
Yes.
Because all the land materials there, I just want to make sure.
Yeah. I was, the one before was the rendered landscape plan, if you can go back to the previous slide.
Chairman, I would agree with you, if I may suggest, it would not only be at installation, but perhaps in five years and ten years, since plants, since plants grow. And would like to know sort of a more mature settlement from all angles, including inside the property, would be helpful to me to understand the full context of this.
So you're looking
My suggestion, sir.
For like a perspective rendering, essentially, of what those plants would look like?
Yeah.
Okay, not just a plan view, like a three D.
The, the challenge is, and I'll try to be diplomatic, let's say we, let's say the building is not the most attractive building in the world. One would hope that perhaps some creative landscaping upfront and over time. And for example, across the street is multifamily housing. And you just don't notice what's going on in that property due to the landscaping. Now, I understand things take time. But that's my concern.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? Are you also looking for a landscaping plan as if you're standing on Weed or Elm Street and looking at the property instead of just the plan view looking down?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yeah. Thank you for that.
Okay.
Mr. Chris, you agree?
Yes, I mean, a bird's eye view, it might be helpful, but also from the streets, particularly what pedestrians and vehicles would see, what they drive by or walk by, as well as inside. So it'd be sort of a human eye view, about six foot, exactly what it would look like. So you can see not only the plants, but also what the plants are covering, that'd be my thought, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, understood.
Right. Okay. Just to add one additional facet to that, I'd be even more concerned about what the four neighbors to the east of this property are going to be seeing. So whether that be a, a standing view, looking to the east at those properties, or the opposite view from their property back towards this building, this development, the lighting, the landscaping, et cetera.
Okay.
I agree, sir. Okay, anybody else for, like Blackburn? At Mr. Angle.
Lynn, can you pull up slide one? Because we breezed right through that, but it is really the only image we have of what the planting plan would look like in an elevation. And I've been staring at it, comparing it to the other drawings for the last ten minutes, and it's not meant to be accurate, is it? Those cars are not there, those, that curb is not there, those plants are not there.
I, I think this focuses on the building architecture. I did not, you know, produce this rendering.
Because I couldn't try and recreate that traffic pattern based on, I couldn't figure out where the, where the perspective was from, and that's what makes me not trust the landscaping in that image either, right? It's not, it's not accurate.
I think this might have been conceptual, just to show the building.
It was, and their landscaping plan had to go.
The plant material and landscaping plan had not been created at that time. We were just trying to get the massing and the architecture settled down, so it just didn't look so out of context, but that can be certainly updated. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And, and, and the other thing, not to be repetitive, but I will be, is to think about And, and, and the other thing, eh, not to be repetitive, but I will be, um, is to think about how landscaping could potentially develop over time. And potentially replicates probably the, the wrong word, but you know, look at that property across the street.
Yeah, absolutely. And it's something, you know, we're thinking about when we do our planting to make sure things don't get overcrowded as they grow and, and plan for, you know, ten, twenty, thirty years.
Okay, thank you. Okay, commissioners, um, who would like to jump in with the next? I, I thank, uh, Mr. Turner for Miss Buckburn, or you wanna go to, yeah.
Mister.
Thank you, Miss Buckburn.
Thank you.
Uh, I got a question about your level of service, um, on the intersection of Weed and Elm.
Yes.
Uh, the two, twenty twenty-two build indicates a, a level of service of F, which is failure. It's gridlock. Um, I, um, I'm just a little confused how you can, um, uh, propose the driveway, the interaction between, um, Weed and Elm and the traffic movement, uh, when you basically have a gridlock situation.
Well, um, so that intersection is a stop sign controlled intersection, right? So, eh, generally, most stop sign controlled intersections fail. On, i- if you have a single, uh, stop approach to any, um, major corridor or even local collector, you know, usually those, those uh, um, the delay experienced at those approaches. It is, it is not uncommon for those approaches to register a level of service F. And again, that's just the average um, delay experienced by a driver. The existing conditions that exist out there have that intersection operating at a level of service E and, and D during the, the AM and, and PM peak periods. Um, our trip generation has a very n- nominal increase from a, a delay standpoint. It's approximately seven seconds of potential increase in delay for that westbound movement, um, from Elm onto Weed. Um, that is, uh, you know, the, the DOT looks at when they're doing an analysis from a potential traffic impact. Um, they look at a fifteen second increase in delay. That would be something that would trigger some sort of, um, actual impact. Because again, traffic volumes vary from day to day. You can count an intersection on one day and the next day it could be off by during the same period, it could be off by a hundred trips. Um, so based on our analysis, based on the, you know, the, the, the nominal trip generation associated with this development. Um, that is not a, you know, we do not see that as a, as a, um, an adverse impact from an operation standpoint.
Well, what about the, the safety side of it? I mean, you're, um, you're creating a backup of traffic at that stop sign and, um, you've got an entry and an exit. Um, you're, you're creating a more dangerous situation.
Well, we, we aren't creating the existing situation that exists.
No, the, the twenty twenty-two build.
Ri- right, so, so we're not, but again, the, the, you look at those existing conditions, right? And then you look at what happens with, with our additional, um, trips. Our additional trips are, are, you know, we're looking at, and let me pull up the numbers so I can point to it exactly. We're talking about adding, um, uh, two trips, taking a right and potentially eight taking a left, um, in the afternoon and then only, uh, three trips taking right, eleven trips taking a left in the morning. So that's over an entire hour. That's the peak hour. So, you know, those, when you actually look at the, the volume of vehicles that we're discussing, um, those aren't, uh, you know, those aren't really adding to, they're not creating an unsafe condition. Again, because there's, there's any congestion that's there and, and, you know, we aren't talking about major traffic volumes, um, to, to begin with.
Well, how do you account for somebody using the, uh, crosswalk? You've got pedestrians now that are gonna be um, slowing traffic down even further. How is that factored into your analysis?
Um, well, I can look at our sync analysis and we can certainly, you know, look at pedestrian volumes and anticipated pedestrian volumes. But again, for a stop sign controlled intersection, that's just a single stop sign approach. Um, you know, pedestrians find time to pass while, while someone stopped and, and from an overall volume standpoint, that doesn't really impact the operations. You know, we did discuss this intersection and the control with the, um, uh, deputy chief. Um, they had actually looked at, or they, the town had evaluated possibly doing like an all way stop control there, so actually stopping Weed. Um, both northbound and southbound in addition to, um, the eastbound movement. Um, that actually would potentially improve operations and it's something that the town said they would consider, but it wouldn't, it wasn't something that they saw as a necessity, even with this, um, even with the, the trips proposed as part of this development. Um, but it's certainly something we can further explore, to see if there's an increased way to improve that, that operation.
But that modification to the stop sign solution at that intersection is in response to this development. It would be.
No, it would, it would be.
That's exactly what you just said.
No, the.
Would cons, let me finish, sorry. That the town would consider that in terms of improving the safety at that intersection, has not done that thus far. And it would be in response to this type of a development, increasing the load at that intersection, correct?
The, the, uh, deficiencies of that intersection are based on the existing volume.
With the existing, but the existing volume or existing grade score is an E. And by your own analysis, it's going to F, it's going to failure. I understand the metrics in terms of how many additional counts and trips, but the simple answer is it's making it worse, right?
It's not making it unsafe.
No, answer my question, sorry. Is it making it worse?
There's a slight degradation and increase in delay.
So question, why, uh, why went a second entrance way on Weed Street being incorporated? Um, and how would that potentially impact the level of service?
Um, well, the, you know, uh, um, uh, possible second access off of Weed would be kind of to the north of that building. Um, it would provide a, a greater distribution of trips to, to potentially alleviate that. Um, it's something that the project team is kind of evaluating. Um, you know, we wanted to try to maximize the buffer to that resident to the north. Um, so incorporating a full access driveway there would, would certainly reduce the ability to do that in some respects, but, um, we could certainly continue to look at that. And obviously for, for emergency vehicle access and egress, it was something else that was raised in the comments that we're currently working on and evaluating.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
So if, if I could just ask another question, so when you have a level of service that's F associated with that level of traffic congestion? How could that level of traffic congestion not, on a statistical basis, um, on average lead to more traffic safety issues, more accidents?
Um. Could you, could you repeat the question?
Sure. How does a, how does a level of service of F? Doesn't that lend itself to potentially more traffic safety issues?
Not necessarily, that, that's just the delay experienced by a driver. So it doesn't, no, doesn't, there's no direct correlation in in delay and safety. Um, you know, existing, there are already existing delays there, yet there's no, uh, safety concerns identified by, you know, the New Canaan Police Department or in a study of, of accident and incidents at, in those locations, so.
Have they identified the, um, Weed Street as a high traffic area, high traffic road in that area?
No, they have not, not to my knowledge.
Uh, this is, uh, Commissioner Cassavant, I have several questions. First, um, the construction of this, um, or potential construction here would presumably involve children um, living in some of the units. So, so first part of my question, what is the average occupancy? Uh, the, of the apartments and construction of household demographic relative to children who might need school buses or total counts for the purposes of traffic only?
Um, I, I don't have the statistics in terms of potential schoolchildren generation associated with this development. Um, I can tell you that we've, we've coordinated with the Board of Ed and that they have active bus routes that go both Weed and Elm Street. Um, so you know, from, from the purposes of additional schoolchildren in terms of from a safety standpoint, you know, I think um, the bus routes that go along both Weed and Elm stop along those roads, you know, these aren't, uh, super high volume roads. So I think if anything, we would probably envision, you know, likely a bus stop at the northeast corner of that intersection. Um, but I don't have the specific generation rates for schoolchildren where the traffic engineers.
So, so just a sort of a yes or no answer, you haven't made any assessment of how many children might attend school from a hundred and two units based on any, I, I mean, that may not be part of the normal traffic protocol, but there is no assessment of that.
As, as, as it, from a traffic engineering standpoint, no.
Okay, and second question is, is there any plan for a school bus stop embedded in any of the drawings that we've seen so far?
We have not envisioned a, a, a school bus stop interior to the site that would likely be served along either Weed Street or Elm Street. And that's something we're trying to work with the town on to, to further evaluate.
And, and a third question relates to the actual proximity of this site to the intersection of Frog Town Road, um, with, uh, Weed, which is an extremely difficult intersection, has been for the thirty years that I've lived in this town. Um, does your traffic study assess the impact going south? Which is, I, I, I don't know the exact measure and, and in fact, and as a second part of that question, the difficulty of driving on that road because of the, um, slope of that road? If there were additional traffic and, and if, if it's not customary for your traffic study to go beyond that intersection, then please identify that.
Sure, so, um, we did not include an analysis of the Weed Street intersection with Frog Town Road. The conventional rule of thumb for traffic studies is if you are putting a hundred trips on an intersection, it is worthy of including in your analysis. Um, going south down Weed Street, we are only generating, um, you know, less than twenty trips or, uh, yeah, actually less than twenty trips, um, in both periods. So further analysis further south would not, uh, meet the, you know, normal and customary analysis from a traffic study standpoint. So we did not include an analysis further south on, on Weed Street.
And the normal and customary traffic studies that are performed, um, are normal and customary standards established by, um, you know, what, what, is there any basis for for example, overall community size or density or intensity, to use some of the terms that we used earlier, is there a single model?
The Connecticut Department of Transportation essentially, you know, provides recommendations. Um, it is not, it's, it's not specific per communities because it's, you know, traffic is a way of, of flowing regardless of where the town line is. Um, so, you know, we generally follow their protocol and their direction in terms of preparing studies. Um, and that's their, their rule of thumb.
Thank you. Uh, questions, your chairman, if I may? Um, I think of all the things the commission thinks about, one, the, number one is safety issues. Um, and you mentioned fire, and if I understood you, if I quoted you correctly, incorrectly, please stop me, you said you did your analysis based on the largest fire vehicle in the chain, is that correct, sir?
That is correct, yes.
Now, fairly big building. And let's say it's, um, there's a structural fire with top floors, the entire floor is engulfed, it's bad. Um, my understanding is that, um, our fire department prudently would call in other fire departments to help them in this. So Vista, I think we have a good relationship with Vista, uh, Darien, Stanford, uh, Wilton. In order to assist in what is, what could be a very serious fire at, at height. And so I'm wondering, um, the sizes of some of their fire vehicles and whether most of those vehicles were a very serious fire are easily accessible to this, uh, to this site and whether you've looked at the sizes of the fire vehicles of adjacent fire departments that could very well be in New Canaan to assist in saving life and limb.
Of course, and, and that's, that was actually a comment raised, I think, in one of the peer review comments. I think the life, health and safety one. So, so as I mentioned before, we're currently working on responses to those. So part of those responses, we'll be evaluating, you know, any of those surrounding municipalities and, and what their um, fire apparatus looks like, so we can kind of better evaluate that. But I'd also say that, you know, this site is a little bit uniquely positioned as a corner lot where it actually has full, um, accessibility from a fire safety apparatus standpoint from both Weed Street and Elm Street. Which I think is, you know, pretty customary for, um, you know, any projects or, or buildings that are close to, um, you know, that are located in close proximity to streets on corners and things like that. So um, there is ample room and circulation around the entirety of the building to provide for that emergency, uh, responsiveness.
So in direct answer to my question, the, um, accessibility of perhaps larger fire apparatus from neighboring towns that may be on site to deal with a problem, um, is not something you've measured yet, you, you're planning to look into it.
Well, well, again, I mean, we, we look at what the municipalities, um, response vehicles are. Again, per those comments and per this discussion, we understand we want to look at surrounding communities, so we will, we will do that and provide that for the commission's consideration.
Thank you.
I have a question about the, um, the intersections that you've studied with regard to this project. You looked at, obviously, Weed and Elm. And then further down, you looked at what you're calling Grove Street and Private Drive, which I think is actually just the entrance to Carl Chevrolet. I'm wondering why you did not look at the intersection and it's, it's an odd intersection, so I'm not even sure if that's the right term, but where the driveway to Pride's Crossing, the Acme Grocery Store, Kimberly Place and Seminary Street all come together. Um, because there's some very odd geometry there, just given the orientation of the roads. You've got two major trip generators um, in the Acme Grocery Store, which is the largest grocery store in town and fifty-one units and Pride's Crossing that have a lot of cars coming in and out. And I personally have, you know, lived in that area and dealt with that intersection and, and you even show on your traffic counts um, from Grove Street up to the entrance to your project site, basically a hundred car increase um, in between those two places. And the reason is because you've got the grocery store and you've got people coming in and out of Pride's Crossing and Kimberly Place. So why did you not study that intersection?
You know, it was a, it was a, there are kind of commercial driveways there. I agree that the geometry is a little, uh, uh, peculiar. Um, there was no, you know, it wasn't an intentional decision not to include it. Um, you know, again, from a trip generation standpoint, we're only putting, you know, uh, let's see eighteen and twenty-two trips for the AM and the afternoon peak. Um, through those intersections from an assignment standpoint, but if the commission is, is interested in seeing that operations, we could certainly add that to our analysis.
Yeah, I think that that intersection should be considered and I also think crash data from that area should be considered because I think that there's probably more than you realize going on. Um, the other question I had, I mean, I know you're taking your trip generation numbers from the, the ITE, which is kind of the standard. They feel low to me, um, having lived in Pride's Crossing for a while where there's only fifty-one units. Um, it seems like there's a lot more than the number you're saying coming in and out every day. Would it be prudent or possible to also kind of do a traffic count of the number of cars coming in and out of of condo development across the street from the one you're proposing? Obviously half the size, but to see if the numbers you're quoting are actually accurate.
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly kind of, uh, look at that from an evaluation standpoint. And again, I think so, we're talking about peak trips during that peak hour. And I think, you know, um, certainly it's, well, a hundred and two units, that's gotta be one to two cars per unit and they're all coming in and out at the same time. But I think as, 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 you know, the, the commission is probably experienced, you know, everybody has different schedules. Um, people kind of come and go at different times. I mean, we look really good with that peak hour. Those are, you know, those are pretty well established rates, but we can certainly, uh, talk about, um, evaluating other developments.
Yeah, I just be curious, like I said.
Anybody else? I, I have one more question on the entrance drive and maybe this is, uh, Mr. DeAndrea's question as opposed to yourself. Uh, it's a, coming off of Elm Street, uh, coming westbound. It's a pretty sharp hairpin right turn coming into the property. Um, your fire truck analysis kind of proves that. Um, is there any reason that, that maybe it's great or something else, but the reason that entrance drive is dog-legged in such a way relative to the west, uh, sorry, the east side of the building where it's a straight driveway in?
We wanted to ensure there was adequate site distance. So, so it's really for the vehicles exiting and looking to the left. We needed to make sure there was adequate separation. There are some stone walls there and we're actually removing some of those stone walls to ensure that we have that site distance. So that's why we aren't further, uh, east with our driveway.
So maintaining site distance, it's downhill at that point. Many site distance down that road or to the next driveway for both?
Looking, looking to the left, um, eh, yeah, looking east, so exiting the driveway and then looking to the left. We want to make sure there's adequate site distance based on how fast people are driving, um, on Elm. So that's based on that empirical, uh, speed data, eighty-fifth percentile speed and, and then ensuring we have sufficient room so that people have, can, can you know, make those decisions safely to make those exiting maneuvers.
Actually, I have one more question um about the crosswalk that's been proposed. Um, so when you approach that intersection and you're going up Elm Street and you're approaching Weed, you're coming up the hill, the visibility to Weed Street isn't great, and sometimes you actually have to pull across the the white line that tells you where you're supposed to stop to actually see if cars are coming. Um, so putting a crosswalk there, I'm just wondering what what plans or thoughts you have about making that a safe crossing? Because people may not know that a car is turning right from Weed Street onto Elm there um. And cars may not know there's pedestrians in the crosswalk. Are you looking to put a flashing beacon the way we have currently going the other direction?
We 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 weren't um proposing an additional flashing beacon on Elm because it is stop sign controlled. But I guess you're saying you're concerned about people taking a right onto Elm from Weed and not seeing someone in the crosswalk? Well, I can, let me, let us take a closer look at that and provide a more informed response based on that specific question.
Uh, Commissioner John Engel, I um, I live on the northwest of town and I probably went through that intersection eight times today. And um, so I'm I'm imagining um both what you just said, which is when I'm heading um uh up into that intersection and I'm looking left and right on on it's a very fast Weed Street. And so it the behavior is that we tend to, if you see a, if you see a vehicle coming um from far away from your left, you're gonna wait because you know that that vehicle is traveling forty miles an hour. And you know that you gotta basically, you gotta wait for him to come through because they're not gonna slow down and you're not gonna be able to cut him off. So what I'd experienced at six o'clock coming to this meeting tonight was probably four cars stacked up trying to um enter that intersection. So my first question, there's a question here. My first question is um, how many cars need to stack up before they impact your exit from the complex? It occurs to me that it might be as few as three cars stacked up. And I believe I experienced three or four cars stacked at six o'clock tonight, waiting to pull into the Weed Street intersection. And then the second thing is if they are stacked and cars are trying to get out and they basically make a gap to try and get through through the stacked cars to get to the other side of the road in order to make a left. Are those cars being a able to be seen by the cars exiting Elm Street quickly and entering onto Elm Street? So I I do think that there is a safety concern, both in terms of the visibility, when you have stacked cars and your ability to exit the complex uh when you have stacked cars is probably diminished. So I'd be more interested in those
So so our driveway is approximately two hundred feet from that intersection. So you'd need, it's roughly ten cars or so, if you were to assume twenty foot spacing for for vehicles. So it's roughly ten cars stacked up, traveling um uh westbound on Weed before you would have an issue with with our driveway.
But maybe not sight, you might still have to, you might still not be seen exiting your complex if the cars are stacked up, yes?
So so when vehicles turn from Weed onto Elm, the good thing is you have to slow down to turn. So, you know, well. It's still, it's still a, it's still a ninety-degree turn. Um, and generally you're traveling roughly nine miles if you turn um left and, you know, maybe twelve miles when you're turning right, right? So so even with that, you have, you have two hundred feet of of clear visibility to that uh to that driveway. So um, and you're coming into that approach, uh, you know, you're not, you're not traveling you know, forty miles an hour on Elm as you approach that driveway. Um, so we wouldn't expect that to be a a a problem. Um, but we can kind of certainly maybe look at more spot speed information for for vehicles on we on Weed Street.
Did you, in your analysis, check the speeds, the average speeds going through that intersection?
We 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 installed an ATR along Elm Street near our driveway to know how fast they were going on Elm Street. Across the front of our of our site and near our driveway. We didn't look at the vehicles kind of going through the intersection or on Weed Street. We focused on Elm Street because that's where our driveway was proposed.
I think the I think the speeds on Elm Street are pretty modest, but I think the speeds on Weed Street are terrifying. And so that's just anecdotal evidence, but I think Weed Street is where I'm most interested in the the speed data. Um, it's fast, so.
An additional question on traffic, if I may. Sir, uh, you you mentioned um the uh, I guess transit or in development near and I guess transit in this case refers to the Railway Depot we have in town. Or in the center of town, we have another one on the edge of town, um, um, Townman Hill, which we're not discussing tonight. But um, have you done traffic studies for um multifamily, similar multifamily developments in other towns that have uh railway depots in them and usage of the depot?
We have, and and actually, that's that's one of the things I mentioned is part of our trip generation. Is that the newest addition that ITE put out actually has specific rates for um developments of this type that are within a half mile of uh transit stations. Um, so that actually does take into can take into consideration, you know, overall trip generation. I'll say that our initial study prepared on based on version ten, we did not take any credit for any kind of transit oriented development or the you know, the anticipated uh usage of uh of that train station by residents, whether it being walking or biking or things like that. Um, but I'll say that as we look at, you know, as as we prepare our response to the peer viewers comments and looking at that trip generation, we'll certainly look at that and and incorporate that into our response.
Is trip generation the sense of perhaps someone driving to a railway depot and parking, though there they may walk, but wh- whether proves to be a useful um um, a useful transportation hub. So for example, uh, you may be familiar with other railway depots and or rural parts of Connecticut such as um West Reading. Just kind of out there.
Yeah.
And Cannondale, I'm very familiar with Cannondale since I'm involved with the charity, uh, it's right there. And um, they're just not not used that that heavily. And also I'm thinking about the demographics of the people may be living here. You know, they're already gonna be taken, it's that this is a train to Manhattan in effect. You know, is that something really that is going to matter at all? So the fact that it's near Railway Depot is particularly relevant to the demographics uh likely of the people who would be living in this building?
I mean, I would, I I would, I would um pontificate, I guess, as a word. Um, you know, the P O C D identifies that there is a severe lack of housing for young professionals in New Canaan. And I think that is a demographic that would actually certainly thrive um in a facility like this. Um, I think the likelihood that those young professionals may be in need of transit to New York City or or other points south would actually likely would result in a in a considerable amount of of usage um of that uh train station um by residents of the facility.
I guess it's some of the numbers that were quoted earlier were um minimum rent at twenty-five hundred dollars a month for a cent for a one bedroom, small one bedroom. So my math means that's thirty thousand a year, if you assume maximum thirty percent, I'm dealing with round numbers, it's easier. Uh, round numbers, that means the minimum of a hundred thousand dollars for probably a single person has to live there. So it's kind of wealthy workforce housing, but uh.
I I'd say that the cost of housing is an epidemic, you know, not only in Connecticut, but nationwide. And I think the, you know, there's a lack of sufficient housing. Um, and I think that the opportunity for young professionals to stay in New Canaan and work in New Canaan and um, live in a place like this would be far more affordable than trying to live further south or or into Manhattan itself.
We have still the at the minimum of thirty percent um deemed to be for people of more modest means. So it's a hundred and two units, I guess for thirty percent, you have to have thirty-one units since thirty is below. That's that's my math. You can have a partial you less, you have so, okay, it doesn't divide equally, so it's some thirty-one units. And just again, is is this something that um those folks will find very useful or perhaps not not useful? I'm just wondering whether this is um could be helpful to them or not.
Well, I think
It seems to be a selling point. I'm just wondering how you came to that.
I I how we came to to what?
The the usefulness of the transit or development, given central demographics, is this, does that demographic find that helpful?
I think the the demographic that's um would be benefiting from the affordable component of a project of a development like this are are gonna be people who who work in New Canaan already and don't have a viable option to live in the community. And they have to leave the community every day. And I think that they're probably, you know, whether they be teachers or um uh service workers, there are people who are probably already in the community that don't have a an affordable place to live that would, that this opens up options for them.
Um, I'd I would comment um not to interject in the middle of John's comment. Um, the municipal teacher and um police officer and firefighter uh employees may not be eligible under the uh guidelines for low and moderate income as quoted here. And I I think that from a perspective of asserting affordability for this, and obviously this is off traffic at this point. And I guess those questions will go to Mr. Hollister perhaps later, but that's inconsistent with the actual application rules for affordable housing. And I'll reserve my questions till later on that, but it it does not make sense that um under the affordable housing guidelines that um, you know, teachers and firefighters and police officers are necessarily eligible to apply to live in this housing. So I just take that comment.
Question on this topic, Mr. Chairman. Anybody else?
Just for context, I was just looking at your drawing relative to that driveway opening we've been discussing. It's not really two hundred feet, it's only a hundred and thirty feet from the corner. And just to give everyone context, the new driveway opening is looks to be somewhere between sixty and seventy feet closer to the intersection of Weed and Elm than the existing driveway opening that you see there on the property today. So for all of us that are trying to envision how many cars are stacking and what the impact will be, just stand there and look at the existing opening and know that the new one will be sixty feet closer to the corner.
And Lynn, could you pull up slide uh page six, please? Because it's a picture of that intersection showing uh even though it's the wrong building, it's showing it probably at the correct setbacks. That's the building um with probably the thirty-foot setbacks. And so that's probably the sightline and how far into the that's the photo of the intersection from the very fast travel path of travel on Weed Street. And so that's the sightline. And what struck me, and it's hard to see uh but on the far right of that photo, you see the wall. And so part of the issue with the sightlines is the wall across the street from you. It's not a condition you created, but we have to deal with it. So we've got a wall on one side of the intersection, you've got a building that's far closer to both Weed and Elm on the other side of the intersection. And that's causing those cars that are already kind of inching up through past the white line, as you pointed out. It's gonna cause them to have to go even further over the white line. So I guess that's just the best illustration of my concern that I could find. It's page six.
That's a very good segue and totally, maybe you're not the right person to answer this, but what are we seeing on page six?
What are you seeing on?
There was no label on that page.
Apparently that render, obviously that rendering is significantly different than all the previous renderings we've seen.
Yeah, th- this is Tim Hollister. For the record, as I explained in my remarks, that is a uh an attempt to create a conceptual plan based on the as-of-right massing and bulk that is allowed under the one acre zone. So that's it's conceptual, it's it does observe the setbacks, but it shows uh two single-family homes at uh height and and bulk that is allowed as of right, as a comparison to the proposed building.
Thank you.
Prepared by an architect.
And pursuant on that, so based on the fact that that is a as-of-right in the single-family zone, I'm gonna presume that that's got a maximum height of forty feet and therefore your so if I'm trying to imagine your structure thirty feet from the corner, your structure is gonna be identical to that, but seven feet taller, right? Nine feet taller.
Approximately is.
Mr. Soli, we've we've been talking about this, but there's going to be so much going on. And um, I can't remember, the the current crosswalk is relatively recent. I can't remember how many years ago, but it was a production of extending the sidewalks to Irwin Park. And um, it's been a wonderful achievement. And it's created a walking pattern um that quite frankly did not exist. Um, and and again, I know you're a numbers guy and you go by the numbers and here's a person who's about to give you an anecdote, but you know, the you you look at that crossing and go into what Mr. Engel said, you know, people do go fast down uh Weed Street. And people are paying attention, drivers are paying attention to the intersection. And I've observed they're paying less attention to that crosswalk. So now we're going to have two crosswalks. We're going to have, I know to Mr. Radman's point, the current entrance will be closer to that intersection. Um, it's relatively unused and now we're going to a hundred and two unit development. And and one of the things as a layman, I wonder about is drivers are more focused on other cars than they're focused on crosswalks. And so so, you know, am I wrong or or how do you address that safety risk? And now you have two two crosswalks, you've got drivers negotiating around. And by the way, you know, another thing I'll add is when the train pulls in, traffic, you know, that's another time you want to do your traffic counts is when a train pulls in. Good point. Um, because people are all, you know, that suddenly Weed and Elm become a very significant artery. Um, but but how do you grapple with everything that's going on?
I think, you know, you look at the the rapid flashing beacon that was installed, that's a traffic calming measure, that's a traffic calming measure, right? And if there are issues with, you know, um you know, existing conditions that are because of a, you know, lack of enforcement of speeding or, you know, uh, other things like that. I mean, you know, it's hard to, it's it's very hard from a from a traffic engineering standpoint to anecdotally respond to bad actors. Right? You know, you can look at other traffic calming measures and things like that, and you can look at enforcing speed limits and and things like that. That's how you get people to focus. Um, you know, it it certainly isn't something that um, you know, should preclude um development. And and again, this 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 development doesn't generate, you know, substantial trips to to warrant um, you know, other uh considerations. There's, you know, and adding a crosswalk to get across Elm Street is a safe thing to do because right now there isn't one. Um, and there's certainly, and there's certainly people
It's not used right now because there's a crosswalk which serves to the objective right now.
Correct, but there are certainly, but but there are certainly people on uh to the north of Elm and to the east of Weed who right now have to cross somewhere that's unsafe. So this crosswalk helps fix that issue as well.
Again, you're the numbers guy, I'm anecdote guy, anecdotally minimal. And part mainly because the town engineered with the town engineer and people now use the the network of walking.
Yeah.
And this is a person who has from time to time worked from where walked from where he lives to the train station. So again, apologize for the anecdote.
No, it's okay. It's good discussion, for sure. And it and it, you know, helps make uh development like this better. That's why we're here. We want to engage this feedback and 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 hear other things we can consider to improve the overall development. Thank you.
Mr. Bash?
No, just wondering if we're moving on to the next.
Sure, let's move on. You look ready.
Sure. Uh, uh, Dr. Paul, and I apologize if I mispronounce the name. Thank you. Hi, Dr. Paul. So in your presentation, you mentioned that uh multifamily, high-density multifamily residences have no impact on other res- other surrounding uh residential values in the meeting community. So on on that point, when you said impact, when when someone says impact, I think that what they're really saying is there's no causation. There's no impact. It doesn't cause anything to change in terms of the values of the surrounding um surrounding homes in that neighborhood. How would one prove that statement? That a multifamily high-density complex has no impact or has no causation on the surrounding property values of that neighborhood?
So there's there's multiple ways to do it. First off, the MIT study that's cited in there. So there's, there's multiple ways to do it. First off, the MIT study that's cited in there. Looks at seven, uh, I believe it was seven multifamily developments that were the Massachusetts equivalent of eight dash thirty Gs. With affordable housing components in metropolitan Boston. And they analyzed thousands of data points, um, sales data, pre and post development. Uh, and the prox, most importantly, the proximate properties to that development. And compared it to the housing market overall, the sales values overall and demonstrated no effect. The Utah study, uh, that's cited in my report, looked at metropolitan Boise. Over a lengthy period of time comparing, they, looking at basically all multifamily development. Uh, and proximity calculations, once again, pre and post development. A real estate appraiser, if asked, would use a paired sales analysis of the same properties pre and post. A development, uh, I've been an applicant, involved in applications that have done that. There's multiple ways to determine that effect. Anecdotally, uh, cause I'm as much a qualitative as I am a quantitative, uh, researcher. Anecdotally, we all know it. Developments occur every day, whether it's multifamily, whether it's single family, whether it's commercial in every community across the country. And we don't see property values plummeting from new development. The fact is, we know what affects property values and it's the overall marketplace, it's demand drivers, it's population, it's jobs. It's, you know, interest rates, it's inflation, it's material costs, it's all those things. It's not necessarily, it's not what's next door to you unless as the studies I've cited in my report. Uh, have also shown with the most noxious land uses, your airports, your nuclear power plants. Your waste facilities, you know, dumps, those have negative impacts on proximate properties.
So everything that you've mentioned is not what one would use to prove causation. Those are longitudinal correlation studies, right? And you know, you're a very learned man, the difference between causation and correlation.
Yes.
Alright, so there's no way to create a controlled experiment to say that there's causation between a high density multifamily complex. And the property values either up or down on the surrounding areas, we're not going to create that sort of social experiment, correct?
In the inverse is true. Anyone testifying that the multifamily negatively impacts or positive, e- either way.
We don't know. The point is, we don't know.
What we know is.
What I'm saying, Dr. Paul, is you can't say that it definitely doesn't negatively impact. A high density multifamily complex does not negatively impact the surrounding property values.
The best research we have consistently says that over the past twenty years.
Correlation?
Yes.
But when I, when you say impact, you're implying causation and impact is a direct cause on something else. And I think what's important here is we can't take an academic study, whether it's Harvard, Cambridge or Utah. And apply it to the radio, very idiosyncratic situation that we're facing here. Where this application is completely out of touch with the surrounding neighborhoods. So those studies could say on a correl, on a correlated basis, that they don't think. That there's an impact from those complexes in the surrounding areas, it doesn't apply to anything that's specific to this application.
So you, you're parsing words, you could say that about anything, my, my nearly thirty years of experience as a land use planner. As a urban geographer, as a researcher who has spent twenty years now studying. Metropolitan regions and development patterns, I can tell you that every community in every development thinks they're unique and different. But the way we, the way things spatially organized at the metropolitan scale. The way that land uses interact at the community scale are actually very similar. That there's not this, oh my God, this is so different than other places. You know, the image I showed you of West Hartford, hundred year old development of, you know, stately historic properties right up against. You know, a commercial corridor and six story, uh, apartment buildings that are also pushing a hundred years old. The fact is, these things have coexisted and no one's negatively impacted, those properties are highly desirable.
If I, if I could, how do you?
It's from a land, from a land use.
Hartford to here, based on scale, density, population, et cetera, to complete with its apples and oranges.
It's not.
Of, of course it is.
No. So, so Wes.
The studies you quote, you also, you, you noted the Boston one, it's about metropolitan Boston. So what's the, what's the coverage radius of that study for those seven projects that they lived at? Was it within?
They're all suburban.
Ten or twenty mile radius.
They're all suburban, they're all suburban of varying income levels at varying, varying distances from the core. So.
Can you, that could mean anywhere between one mile and three miles from central Boston.
No, I, I, I would.
Miles from central Boston?
Within the four ninety five Ring Road. So you, you're, you're talking a substantial large metropolitan region.
Okay.
So.
So, okay, can you envision any sort of complex that would potentially negatively, negatively impact? A high density multi, multifamily complex and residential area like the one we're talking about here. That could potentially negatively impact the surrounding property values.
From, from a land use perspective, if we're talking multifamily in that location or a similar location, no. I've been at this constantly, you know.
Okay, the answer. Um, okay, so I, I, I just would, the area where I differ from your opinion, Dr. Paul, is again. Um, conflating the ideas of causation, correlation, we really don't know. We don't know what the impact of, one can make the argument as Mr. Hollister very well might. That surrounding property values as a result of a new application are completely irrelevant to E thirty G. I, I can buy that argument, but I can't buy the argument that there's no impact, there's no concept, no causation. In, in this type of scenario between a high density multifamily complex and, and the surrounding areas.
So look at the basic tenants of zoning and that's what I tried to do in my presentation. Uh, at the end of the day, we're talking about protecting public health, safety and welfare. And the enabling statutes, the history of zoning is about, you know, the harsh conditions of the industrial city. About panic, fire, so forth and so on. You know, he, here we are debating eighteen cars in an intersection as if it's some giant threat. The, the fact is, these do not elevate any of the issues we're discussing. And property values being a consideration historically and presently in zoning. None of this elevates to the level of a threat to public health, safety and welfare. Yes, may things change a little bit, yes, may you sit seven more seconds.
Health and safety right now, I'm arguing just to the value of other surrounding properties.
But I'm, I'm talking about the big picture of land use.
Okay.
You know, you're, you're saying this causation and you know, that I'm conflating this. I'm answering these questions in the context of land use, big picture land use. Is there any substantial, meaningful, negative impact going on here in these things? No. And, you know.
That's your opinion.
That's my professional expert.
Doesn't mean a lot because it's based a lot of anecdotal studies.
To be clear, we've had multiple applications in front of us over the years, I've been on this board for thirteen years or so. And the ones where this type of contested opinion on property values appears the most in this town. Is when it's an institutional use and that's specifically because of the scale of the development relative to the adjacent properties. And for all intensive purposes, this application is an institutional scale of development in a residential scale neighborhood. That's just the simple fact of it, I know you're going to say it's not, but I'm telling you it is.
Oh, no, I, I'm.
Let me finish. And that's where we've had just as many experts on the flip side of your opinion coming to us and telling us. There will be significant impact to property values. We've heard it multiple times, whether it's St. Luke's, the library, um, uh, country school, it happens on every application. So I, I respect your opinion, but there's just as many of you out there saying that it, there will be an impact. Let me, let me just.
May I respond?
I've got one more thing to say, sorry. What, what you just elaborated on in terms of what should be our primary concern about this application about health, safety only. Is exactly where eight thirty G falls flat on its face in terms of respecting zoning regulations. And what you talked about, the urbanization of America and trying to. Deal with the industrialization of cities and urban environments, and that's where zoning started. It's not all of it. Think about city planning in Paris and Berlin and Europe and even in America in certain cities, Washington DC is a perfect example. Zoning was created not only to address health and safety, but to help control and steer. The architecture and, um, composition and, um, feel of the city. That's its, that's its other primary use. And that's where eight thirty G falls flat, is that it's completely eliminating that whole history of what zoning was about. And focusing very, very, uh, very narrowly focusing only on the health and safety as a. Loophole element to get everything else by. That's what it's reading like to me, from your description.
So from an American historical perspective of zoning, which is more a suburban history than it is an urban history. Cause the cities already developed before zoning came along, the suburbs came later and grew up with it. Uh, it's really now about architecture. Uh, there's nothing in the enabling legislation that discusses architecture, that's for one. Uh, on the other point, if. I'm, I'm sorry, I lost my first point.
So how do you explain innumerable, for example, New England towns that have historical district? Um, uh, you know, historic district commissions that are specifically charged with maintaining the character of the architecture of the town.
Well, one is historic districts are separate from zoning, number two is most of those historic, those historic districts existed. Prior to zoning, or at least the, what's physically there.
Correct, but the HTC's, for example, were created as a byproduct of zoning regulations being instituted in towns.
No.
No? I picked a different.
Historic preservation is different than zoning, they're not the same thing.
But they're, they're intimately tied together.
They're regulatory related, uh, but they're not intimately. So everything that comes before zoning doesn't go to historic and vice versa.
That's true.
So.
Um, okay, so.
Yes.
Change subject for a second, but feel free to jump back in. Um, one of the things you talked about in your presentation about multifamily development is that density is subjective. Um, and that basically densities can work, communities can work at different densities. My question for you is, have you looked at the surrounding densities to this proposed project, both multifamily and single family?
Yes.
And how then do you in your mind correlate something that's going to be thirty two dwelling, dwelling units per acre? To something that's also multifamily across the street and Pride's Crossing, that's nine point six dwelling units per acre. Seems like a pretty different vibe.
Yes and no, uh, yeah, does it feel like a big difference? Yes. At the end of the day, as I cited to the illustrated book of, you know, land use definitions and so forth. It's a reasonable density within suburbia. Uh, it is a common density, we're, we're not talking Hong Kong and two hundred fifty units, you know, per acre. Here or Manhattan at, you know, a hundred and eighty units per acre, it is a suburban density.
Maybe a suburban density, but it's not necessarily what New Canons densities have looked like. With a few exceptions of projects that were one hundred percent affordable, like Canaan Parish in Millport, we have higher densities there. But even other eight thirty G projects that we have in New Canaan, the Avalon that was built in the nineties is seventeen dwelling units per acre. The village at New Canaan, which is on Locust, is twenty two dwelling units per acre. So again, you're proposing ten dwelling units per acre above what we've done in the past. And what we've done even for eight thirty Gs in the past.
Maybe historically density has been too low for New Canaan, for many communities.
But again, that's subjective, that's your opinion.
Yeah, that, that's my point, this is subjective, there's now the public health and safety risk going from three units per acre or one unit per acre. To thirty three units per acre, otherwise everyone would be dying in Manhattan and Hong Kong. Because you know, the public health and safety risks of those extraordinary densities would be causing problems.
But don't, with that density, don't you need a certain level of infrastructure to support it?
And as been.
If we were going to build, you know, a Hong Kong right here in New Canaan, we'd need a different fire department, a different sewer system, a different water system. A whole lot of things that, you know, would be different than today.
You have public roads, public water, public sewer that as far as we're concerned at this point.
Public water. A lot of us don't, yeah. Which is.
At this location, as has been testified, they are the infrastructures that support this development. And at the end of the day, we do this thing in planning, especially in suburban planning or rural planning in Connecticut. We do this thing as if like, if we don't have the infrastructure, we can't actually provide it. So, oh, there's no sewer, there's no water, there's no this, then no density and everything stay away. In many places, most places, they build new roads, they put in sewer, they put in water to accommodate new developments. Just leave the northeastern, you know, parochial northeastern or parochial New England, United States and go to other parts of the countries. Where they extend highways into new areas because they want new growth and development. The fact is, density is possible, we have the engineering technology to actually support density at incredible levels.
Again, you're mixing, you're mixing examples, it's apples and oranges, you're describing examples, for example, I've done work in the Carolinas where. A developer will go into a hundred acres and put in new roads, new infrastructure, new schools, new, new shopping centers to support. Their, you know, a hundred fifty units per acre development, that's fine when you have. I won't call it limitless, but you have an abundance of developable land that's concentrated in certain areas of a particular region. Totally fine, but we're talking about a constrained. Uh, uh. Area of New Canaan that is for the most part ninety, ninety-five percent residential. Well, private land, zoned a certain way, sized a certain way, and we're trying to shoehorn. To a hundred and two units into something that's zoned for a single acre development.
So in, in land use planning and comprehensive plans, it's often common for communities to do what's called a build out analysis. So the, I've got some head nods, I think you know what it is, but you basically do a calculation of available undeveloped land against the existing zoning. To determine the potential development that could come in the future, X number of units and so forth and so on. If you really think about that, that, that's kind of a silly exercise. Because you're just doing the horizontal or the planal view of what it is by, based on existing zoning, right? But what's your comprehensive plan, your P O C D conceptualizes, which I pointed out. Is that future development in this community would come from redevelopment. So when a community horizontally reaches build out, you've occupied the land, ninety-seven percent developed or committed. As stated in your P O C D, what happens next? Vertical, the third dimension, vertical development, an increase in density. So you see it in community after community, I used West Hartford as an example, I use it again. A community that has reached build out horizontally, spatially in the planer sense. But then we see three houses get torn down in sixteen condo units developed on that site. Or a new apartment complex go up on top of what was previously an auto dealership and so forth. The fact is, we don't reach build out, we continue to change, we continue to redevelop. In thirty-three units per acre is within the realm of normal suburban densities, especially adjacent to a downtown. Especially walkable to a rail line. Uh, the core here of your community is very suburban urban, I'll say. We don't have good vocabularies to explain these things. Uh, you know, I'll admit, there's places in your community that are much more rural, uh, much more distant and isolated. And I wouldn't be standing here making the same argument for something on the north end of the community, nowhere near your downtown. Nowhere near, you know, art, uh, substantial arterial streets, nowhere near transit. But your P O C D says it, you can support higher density in this area, that there is the infrastructure there.
Sorry, P O C D specifically says medium density, not high density.
It says higher in one place, it, it. And then it says medium density and you guys define that as one, I, I think I saw something that said, you know. I, I think in the plan it says that's one unit per acre, that's not medium density, that's low density.
Uh, Dr. Paul, could I ask a question? I, I believe, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, but you said in your opening remarks. And, and I wrote this down, so please correct me if I misheard it. The zoning is a system of, of exclusion. The zoning is a system of exclusion. And paraphrase that it is a tool of social, racial and economic exclusion, is that correct?
Correct.
And so the question that I asked is um do you deem all zoning to be in inappropriate and in fact to be by definition a tool of exclusion?
So it's complex to answer that. But the fact is intentionally or unintentionally, zoning does exclude. So whether you have quarter acre zoning or one acre zoning or four acre zoning. The economics change of the development that can occur there. And therefore, the economics change of the household that can afford to purchase there. So therefore, for better or worse, good or bad, right or wrong. There is a socio-economic exclusion that occurs based on the decisions made in zoning. I'm not saying that you guys willfully are being exclusionary. Your P O C D, and this is most P O CDs, highly emphasizes the importance of conservation. That we conserve land, that we protect character, that we do all those things, and therefore the right reasons, liking the environment. But sustainability is about balance between economic, social and environmental. And planning privileges the environmental over the social and the economic. And when we look at it holistically, then we recognize that persons are excluded because of zoning. And it's not that we have to abolish zoning to abolish inequities. I recognize they exist in a capitalist society. But as communities, and I work for municipalities also, and my my narratives are the same, whether I'm standing here or in front of a commission I'm working for. Our challenge is to mitigate the negative impacts that we create by other policy decisions. And so preserving open space or scenic resources, all those maps I showed you from your P O C D. Providing affordable housing is as important as that conservation stuff. In this, this being generically your downtown region, this is the place for in your community. And this development fits with it in your community in this location.
Uh following logically. The developer could therefore then propose a one hundred percent low income building with ninety-nine year land use restrictions and deeded affordability on the project.
Theoretically, yes, econo- financially, no. It's hard enough to make a thirty percent affordable eight dash thirty G work on the financial side. To do it a hundred percent without, you know, low income tax credits coming from the feds and state and stuff, probably nearly impossible.
So so that you're leading to my next question. Which is, was there an intention or any plan to apply at any point in this project for low income housing tax credits? And how did this score against the state's Q A P?
I have no idea.
Uh to which part of my question, please? Was there an a plan to use Lytech? Was there a plan to apply for any doctors?
I I have, I I have no knowledge of that. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Hi, John Eisen again. So we do development consulting all over the country. It's called a gap analysis. The federal government, state government, local government will all do a gap analysis to see if their funds can cover the gap. In today's inflationary period, in yesterday's inflationary period, the cost of construction, the cost of land, the time value of money, interest carry, I could run down a whole list. Could never accomplish one hundred percent unless something was free, meaning land. Construction costs or covering the gap between a one dollar a square foot rent and a three dollar square foot rent. Never anywhere have I seen anything cover that gap at a one hundred percent rate unless there's free. And right now, I'm not sure my client has free land. And I don't think contractors are giving away free construction. So I'm trying to just help you see how that is.
My question was a a simpler question. Customarily throughout Connecticut. Affordable housing is accomplished quite frequently with the use of low income housing tax credits and assistance from DOH. Jaffa and other agencies. My only question here was, did this project consider that route to help provide affordable housing?
There was a follow up to that, you said a hundred percent and I was.
There's a separate question.
No, no, and I was referring to that in particular. I will defer to my client in terms of their development metrics and how they're approaching it. But generally speaking, this is two times, almost three times the national average on a project. I live in an environment where in Washington DC, tremendous affordable housing. Okay, we've got almost three hundred new apartment buildings in the last decade, just within the city limits. Right next to a single family homes, there's that following form base code, high on the corner, low in the middle. And in that vein, I've never seen a project achieve more than twenty-five percent. In Montgomery County, Maryland, which is a very affluent county, not too dissimilar to your county, mandatory twelve point five percent. And projects are barely surviving. So in that vein, the owner can, you know, respond to your specific questions, but I can point out many jurisdictions throughout the country that are not providing what this development is providing. It's admirable and I know change is hard and and I know it's difficult in your community, but you have people here who are deserved to be able to live and work and walk to transit.
My simple question, two questions, which I still don't think I've had an.
I I answered it. You can ask the client. I don't have the metrics to the deal.
So so just picking up, I think, on my on my colleague's point. Um exclusionary is used in a very pejorative way here, and I think this is an issue that's kind of just occurring right underneath the surface. When we talk about Harvard University being exclusive in terms of its acceptance rate, we talk about that in a in a positive light. There are gating factors throughout our lives in abundance. There are gating factors that determine where you go to college, how you do well in college. Determines maybe how, what job you're gonna get there after school, whether you're gonna get into a doctorate program and at what school. There are gating factors everywhere. Right? I think we can all agree on that. There is one gating factor that's relevant to New Canaan in terms of who is living here. It has nothing to do with race, ethnicity, sexual orientation. The only gating factor is the cost of a housing unit. That's the one gating factor. And so I think part of part of it is just saying that for the record, because I think this exclusionary thing, there's there's subtext to that. It's uses in a pejorative way to imply something else, and I hope we don't steer down that direction. Cause there really is only one gating factor that I know of, the cost of a unit.
Sure, and and I don't disagree, but there's a socio-economic dynamic that creates diversity within all jurisdictions. And I think that's what we're talking about, the change from one socio-economic to another. And I think that should be tagged with what you just said, because it can't just be one or the other. The diversity within income, regardless of race or gender, should be considered. And that's how the world's working. The world has changed in front of us. The pandemic has changed the way we live. People are working from home, office buildings are vacant. There is a higher demand for a diverse type of living in a socio-economic diverse community.
So Mr. Pollard, uh Polland. You you've critis- offered several criticisms of our P O C D. And you mentioned uh earlier that in two thousand two, we were at one point nine percent in terms of affordable housing density. And if I'm getting my exact numbers wrong, I might be off a digit or two.
I mentioned two point seven one in two thousand fourteen. That other number may have been mentioned elsewhere.
No, actually, you said in two thousand two, you said one point nine and you said.
That was me.
Very poor progress.
That was me.
That was him.
I'm sorry, that was you.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
He's better looking than you saw.
So I'm not sure if I should be speaking the one or the other um. Other towns in uh in Connecticut, how have they fared over those twenty years? How has that metric? Uh how many towns have done better? How many are in the same boat we are in terms of trying to address the eight thirty G ten percent ceiling? Um and I'm not, I'm not looking for, well, you know, Bridgeport's doing this or larger towns. I'm talking about populations of fifteen to twenty-five thousand are example.
Uh I will get you that information for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. And then um one other comment, um Mr. Hollister brought it up, the Public Act twenty-one dash twenty-nine. Uh which was a supplement or an amendment last year to the eight thirty G, not actually an amendment, is it a supplement, Mr. Hollister? Is that right?
An amendment.
It's an amendment. Um specifically notes in there in section four point B point two that the goal of that amendment was, and I'm quoting here, to prevent the overcrowding of land and to avoid undue concentration of population. How do we reconcile that?
That that's that's enabling legislation that dates back all the way to the early nineteen twenties with the Federal Enabling Act. It's codified pre that amendment in Connecticut general statutes, at least dating back to the nineteen fifties from my knowledge and still exists there today. It was a, they redid eight dash two and how it's formatted, so that language got moved around. So it may have been highlighted, but that's existed all the way back to the.
That's the history of it. How do you think that affects what we're discussing here today?
Read the lines to me again, just so I'm clear.
The the amendment is specifically uh the intent of the amendment is to prevent the overcrowding of land. And to avoid undue concentration of population.
Yeah, so as I said, from my perspective, my expertise and experience in land use. When you go back and look at that original enabling legislation, it was nineteen twenties America, zoning was, you know, aimed at solving the problems of the industrial city. And I regularly argue that we we achieved it, we did it. And actually suburbia is a great example of that, that you clean, you know, zoning and the separation of uses and so forth. Along with other things like building codes, fire codes and, you know, those things. I'm not saying it was just zoning. But ultimately, we solve the problem of the industrial city. So so the un- so the undue, yes.
Okay.
But the undue, you know, concentration of population and so forth and so on. Uh the fact is, you know, that's going back to a density of tenements. That's going back to, you know, New York City in the nineteen twenties or so forth. So far higher than one unit per acre, far higher than thirty-three units per acre.
Uh that's a subjective opinion based on your your.
Subjective opinion with years of researching zoning and suburban and urban history and knowledge. Uh so the fact is, I don't think many, if any, communities. I don't think, I'm not confident any community in America suffers from an undue concentration of population. Uh and it's really interesting when you look at a global scale, we're the lowest density. Uh we we have about, you know, six persons per hectare, which is about two point seven acres, I believe. Uh and you get into Europe and you're up in the hundreds persons per hectare and you get into Southeast Asia and you're up to two hundred and fifty.
But we're not here to solve the world's problems, right?
I get that, but you you're saying it's subjective and I'm just making it clear that, you know, our American densities are extremely low. Uh yet we still treat them like there's a huge public health and safety threat, that it's undue population.
If I may, I'm I've, you know, if you've been to Southeast Asia or Hong Kong, I have on property tours. Have you?
No, I haven't.
I have, yeah. Um. You know, you can't, I can't swing my arms in some of those rooms. And I remember there was one, it was a.
I'm not advocating for.
Bathroom for a, I mean, a full bath for a unit, a more affordable unit for, it was people immigrating from the mainland. And um you you had to sit on on a side saddle because there wasn't room to sit forward and uh it was pretty crammed. I mean, given what some of the residents had experienced in their prior lives, I thought it was terrific. And I got running water in my house that's clean, real happy about that, but um it's a different situation um. Depending on where one is, and this is a that kind of a situation, but I would make a a suggestion to you, sir, if I may, you quote the um uh plan of conservation development, which is fair enough, but you may want to look at some of our regulations, say exclusionary. Um I'll make a little speech here, so I apologize for that in advance, but this commission uh requested, it was the town council to instigate a um a fee on new construction, which has been used for for many years for uh seed money for low income housing, when we were the first state to do that. Uh others have mimicked us, so um good on us and uh our own regulations for um more sort of medium density, low end mul- multifamily and even any kind of multifamily varies a bit um. That uh twenty percent need to be allocated to affordable. Uh to the extent it's a partial unit, cause you can't have half an apartment, uh it's a a a cash payment. The idea is that it's kind of sort of more or less what's gonna be used to uh build another one and that will go to a housing fund, so. Uh if you, I think if you look at our regulations, we've gone out of our way over the space of many, many years to try to not only fund this and as Commissioner Cassavan says very number of times and said here that, you know, it's about the Benji's baby, it's about the money to, who's gonna pay for all this. Uh and that uh in effect, this town uh has been paying for it for quite a number of years and I think we've been quite successful. The um development that's coming out of the ground right now um is just terrific. I've turned, I it's a lovely, lovely place and um uh the seed money of this was from this assessment we had, so. To say there's been exclusionary, I'm not sure it's really quite capturing the actions that we in New Canaan have been taking for a number of years.
I definitely recognize those regulations, but you can do more.
Mention them.
Huh?
Never mentioned them.
Cause I was looking for barriers. I I wasn't looking here to kind of, you know, pat your regulations on the back.
So you're saying you lack objectivity?
No, 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 no. No, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that at all. What I'm saying is, you I I, look, I regularly work for municipalities. I'm doing affordable housing plans for municipalities right now. And you can have a very good zoning regulations in some ways, that's very poor in other ways. And the fact is, it it's unfortunate that we unknowingly, most of the times, create undue barriers within our zoning regulations. So it's very easy to say, yeah, we have an affordable housing zoning district. But when you tie it only to the road that it's built on with frontage on that specifically named road, then that's not opening up opportunities for affordable housing in the community, just that one district, and it's in the past, it's been developed.
Isn't that what we're doing here?
Huh?
Isn't that what we're being asked to do here is to develop a district specifically on one road for one project?
I I believe it was specified earlier by Attorney Hollister.
You're putting that down, but that's also what you're asking us to do.
No, no, that that that's not what I'm saying. I I believe it was left open that you could expand this to more areas of the town if you wished. You could do that with those other zoning districts if you had wished. But as it reads, as someone reviewing the regulations, as it reads, it appears to me as a barrier. It appears to a limitation to actually achieving, you know, more affordable housing, as your P O C D talks a lot about. But then it doesn't provide specific strategies to do so. It says we we recognize this, we have this need, we know that, but then it doesn't say this is how we're actually going to build more affordable housing. That doesn't deny the fact that you, you know, have a surcharge and a fee and collect funds to fund uh housing. That doesn't deny that. That doesn't deny prior developments. But it doesn't proactively say to me that you're actually doing these things.
Well, as a, as a response to that, one should note and 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 Attorney Hollister, you you might wish to consider this in your uh opening remarks. All of the units at Mill New Canaan, Mill Two. And the other, there have been four projects, all of the unit count has been rebuilt in the last decade by the town of New Canaan. And as Dr. Polland's comments on quality are quite germane here. The town of New Canaan, your comments about the importance of qualitative factors here. The units have been rebuilt by the Housing Authority of New Canaan. Generally using low income housing tax credits, but in all cases, in addition to adding units, the existing less than high quality units have been replaced and redone all within the last decade. And that that is is a matter of fact, matter of record, which is, to Krista's point, not contemplated in and and why I reacted to with to your remark. And and why I reacted to with to your remarks earlier. With the system of exclusion.
Ho- however. To continue on what you're saying. Lest you think that the only, the only kind of affordable housing that we can do here in New Canaan is done by the town. We actually have a uh a project in front of the commission now that it by a private developer. Who paid for the land. Who's anticipating making a portion of it affordable housing. So we're about to consider a project in the downtown. That has an affordable housing. So it's not the only way we get things done in a cannon. It's been historically the only way we've gotten it done for the last ten years, but we have zoning that allows. Private developers to apply. And we consider it. And I think we have a track record of approving these more often than. We deny them.
Yeah.
I did. Mr. Polland, one thing you you've said was to that point was I wrote down. You said there are no opportunities within downtown. And. As Mr. Angle just said, there's multiple opportunities.
Yeah.
Um and there's, there was an opportunity a number of years ago that the current applicant took advantage of, and there continues to be opportunities.
I don't believe I said there was no opportunity in downtown.
Okay, then I. I wrote that down, but I must have misheard you. Um but the point is. Is, I mean, first of all, I think you've heard loud and clear. I mean, you walk in here and you say this is not an inclusionary town. And then you. Put out the whole map of New Canaan and you see like there's this tiny little piece that you apply. But then later in your discussion in our remarks right now, I'll note that you then backed off. And said, yeah, I completely get the fact you wouldn't have multifamily housing in northern New Canaan. So it, you know, look, the 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 point here. Is, one, is, you know, this narrative. And I've been paying a lot of attention over the past couple of years to the narrative. I'm not an expert like you, but I've been doing a lot of reading. And there's this narrative that zoning is exclusionary and people pick a nineteen twenty-seven example of horrible use of zoning. I think it was in West Hartford, wherever it was. And, you know, therefore zoning is evil. And and it's not evil. And and. And, you know, I I think the most important point here is, can we do, can this commission do better? Yes, this commission can do better. But, you know, you talk to the head of the Housing Commission here and his biggest challenge, and this has come up in our discussion, is cost. I think you yourself, you gave a speech to West Cog in which you talked about costs. And, you know, I've actually, I'm not picking you up. I actually listened to it. I didn't get on the internet and pull this thing out. And I paid a lot of attention to what you had to set.
Yep.
And and that's the challenge we have in New Canaan. And but we have, we're, we we were, we're dealing with that. And we, as as it has been noted within the past year, led by Ms. Nielsen, who in her prior life left. Led a fifteen-person planning staff in the city of New Orleans. So we do have a couple of people who know what they're talking about. And we passed. Regulations to promote affordable housing. And so our point is. That we are trying to move forward on it, and we see there are opportunities within our current zoning map to do exactly that.
I just hope you understand, as as you know, I I I'm not of that narrative that zoning is bad. I I don't come here to tell you you're exclusionary. I speak about your regulations. I don't speak about you personally. I'm I'm not here to bash New Canaan. The fact is, most communities in the eight dash thirty G appeals list show that. Are in the same boat as you guys in Connecticut, that there's only like thirty-eight that are exempt or whatever. That we have an affordability issue. I recognize the price challenges, as you know, from my West Cog presentation. So I'm here honestly before you. Recognizing the challenges, I recognize your struggles. At the end of the day, you have a good development. Before you that I truly believe from my professional perspective. Fits. And works and is consistent with your P O C D and doesn't threaten public health, safety and welfare.
Anybody else for Dr. Polland or should we move on? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, a question for the engineer, if I may.
Sure. Mr. DeAndrea?
Sir, you're it.
I say that with humor and not malice, just for the record.
If Ms. Avney could pull up a plot of the proposed development, so you can see the. See it up on the big screen. Two points, among the landscaping one is two point six one, but any one of those. Towards the end, it's like forty something. Yeah, what next one? I've got one. That one's okay. Thank you. I was wanting to get this and something was perplexing me and like know if you can help me out. Where's the snow gonna go? Because I'm looking at this and. There's one entrance, okay, and you have a garth. By the way, that's an open courtyard. It's a garth, sorry. Old English term, I'm pretty sure it is. Anyway, it's called a garth. Uh it's a courtyard that's open on one side in case. You're. The jeopardy question or a crossword puzzle person. Anyway, then you have a, I guess, one road that goes over to the arrowhead-shaped parking lot and it goes around there and. You know, we can get a foot of snow quite easily, as I'm sure you know, and sometimes more in in an evening. And. The plowing and wh- where do you put it?
So we were, one of the reasons we're doing it with rain gardens and the gradient, remember I told you earlier that um. We don't have any street, call them street catch basins. We have a couple of trench trains at the um. Entrances to the parking garages because they sloped down a bit. But everything is graded. For the most part to these uh two rain gardens. They're they're important. Okay. So I also mentioned that when you'd come in, you would blade. Uh push your, push your blade and push it to the right, push it to the left and let it sit along the edges as little as possible. And then get back to the back northerly corner, northeast corner there, and then northwest corner at the very top of the project. Um uh past the rain garden, and that would be some storage areas. A lot of these snowstorms that we get around here, as you know, aren't very much. And we also have great sun exposure and we also have permeable pavement. So the idea here is. Okay, if you have a large uh snowstorm, you do have areas to store it. Uh in those two areas I just pointed to and also in that area between the north side of the. Uh building and the southerly side of the northerly parking lot. The the beauty of this too is as it melts, it goes into the ground. Um and so whether it stays for a week or two or or maybe several weeks, there are areas where you can, where you can store it. In in some situations, if it's that great of a snowstorm, there are as areas designated around the town where they allow the people to come in all the way. Happens in uh I'm sure your community, certainly in Stanford, certainly in Greenwich. So we provided for that, but I think the best thing about this is. And we we've been encouraging this, and if you ever have one, you'll appreciate it. When you have uh forest pavement, permeable pavers, rain gardens, that's great. I mean, when it starts to melt, it goes into the ground, it doesn't shed off into your streets.
Yeah, well, you know, I I have a long driveway and uh at the end of it, big apron.
I do too, so I I know the, I know the issue with that.
Very nice, a beautiful white oak. It's sixty years old and I want to keep. It's a beautiful tree. As you know, they're lovely, lovely trees to have in your property and. Again, you can't. You you start dumping against this tree and you get this pile of snow that's taller than I am and I'm six foot four. Okay, and I I just don't see the adequate space there. And again, it's right next to neighbors. With maybe dietrodes in the snow that kind of melts on their property.
And it all drains back to us, but that's, as as was said earlier, there's no, there are no trees in those corners, so. That that was left purposely without trees, so we would have areas to place the snow, and it's temporary.
So you're gonna have a big. Snow wall at the north end of the property by, right on the property line by the neighbors.
If I, if we had that sizable snowstorm, you have one, two, three, and and the third being a sizable area to. Um. Stack or store the snow if need be. If if you had another one, most likely, the company that hired to do to the uh to the uh snow plowing the maintenance is going to haul it away. And there's going to be areas, remember, when you have these situations, it's not that just this property. You have a lot of downtown areas that have the same problem. Do you sacrifice parking spaces for that? Well, we provided uh appropriate parking and maybe there's a parking space or two that might be encumbered by it. But we've left corridors for this purposely. And again, the design of this is such that we don't have to be relying on catch basins that can be iced over or maybe not cleaned. As it, as it melted, sheds into these rain gardens or into the permeable pavement.
You know, I'm looking at the um green area to the north of the building. With then there's um some perpendicular parking.
And here.
Grade.
Yep.
Uh you could sacrifice those and dump it on the. Dump it right next to the building. I'm not sure that. I'm sure that's the best place to put it. Certainly not going to help.
Certainly have it here. Certainly have it here. And then what I was saying before is, as you start to blade it as well, you you're not. You don't want to take it all and put it in one location. Spread it out and and let it melt away.
Yeah, you say spread it out, but I just not.
Well, when you come in, you're the same, you you say you have a long driveway, so do I. So what I try to do when I do mine is I, as I. Uh blade it to the right or the left, and maybe it narrows down the driveway a foot or two. But that's a storage area in itself. And then as you push back this corner, great, then you can come around and push it to the other corner. And this is the large area, again, without landscaping, if you can see here. So we've given that some great consideration. Uh we don't want to put all the snow into the rain garden. We want to protect that vegetation. We'd rather have that work to allow the. The snow to melt and then be intercepted by those two rain gardens.
I just see the garden that um. I guess the. Arrowhead-shaped. Center plus the green pits on the far north.
I do that, it doesn't.
Which uh. But then you you get to lose some sightlines there and. I I'm not sure how much you can. Just, it just didn't seem adequate to me to to um store snow there. Frankly, and it would have to be hauled away in a.
But that would be, that would be managed. That would be managed, sure. And and again, we're. We we get snowstorms that could be very, you know, an inch or two or or so, or we could get a a large snowstorm. We may have back-to-back. So again, in all the uh situations like that, there there are remedies for that. And in this case. Again, there is a nice, large area north of the building where if they really had to store it onsite, that'd be the perfect location and it's been kept free of trees for that purpose.
Which is also right on a property line with. Neighbors uh.
No, 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 sorry, not there, just to the north side of the building.
North side of the building, just, I don't know, that's pretty practical. And I looked at the main driveway on the. Uh. East side, again, there's not much of a cushion between. Any between the uh uh right away and the picket line, rather modest picket line of uh vegetation. I worry about damage to it, given the uh tight spaces from plows and so forth. So it happens to me, maybe other folks.
And it's curved. And and again, it it that's a management issue. I- i- if the snow is that much, then they will pay to have it all the way to a a a. Appropriate designated location.
Well, I'd be particularly concerned about using the very north end of the property, which is right on a property line, right next to the neighbors, as a snow dump. And with with melt and there's dietrodes and other big stuff that gets caught up in the snow. Uh with possible melt towards uh neighbors, it just. It's an issue of concern for.
Well, it 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 would, it it would come be coming back to the south, back toward, not towards the neighbor.
You say, I'm just. Can't quite rest.
It's how, it's how we graded it, right?
So uh that's my question. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm done. Um it's looking at the uh hydrologic soil group study. Um there's a couple of things that I think are are pertinent to. Um questions that I could ask of you, Mr. Dandrea. Um. So one is uh that soil group study um. For it's, this is for the map unit of forty-five B, which is around sixty-five percent of the total area of interest of, you know, the entire parcel that we're looking at. Is categorized with a rating of C D. C D pertains to. Um soils that have a very slow infiltration rate. And high runoff potential uh when thoroughly wet. So I'm wondering to what extent. Um that could it all be incorporated? In uh the studies you performed on the potential capacity utilization and and. Um when we have a a very bad storm.
When when um. Well, remember, we we've designed this through the hundred-year event, so these are. Bad storms that these are designed for. And i- in our analysis, we look at the infiltration rates and they're not. Large, high infiltration rates. So we're doing a combination of, like I said earlier, retention and detention. And then we're using this throughout the site. If you look at our uh site plan, you'll see all sorts of areas. It's not concentrated one area. We have multiple number of systems that take water. Again, take the roof, for instance. The roof goes to four different systems, not not one, not not concentrated, but spread around the building itself. And then you have the rain gardens and then you have subdrains below that too. So that's how we accomplish it, through the volume of the systems and spreading it out over the soils. The soils aren't aren't bad. This would be a a different design if we had a site here that was full of rock. But we don't have that.
Well, this is saying that that rating of C D.
But you, that's a generalize, and then we do our own test bids and we've done our borings there, so.
I'm saying there's a separate independent study. That cat- categorized sixty-five percent of the area of interest in this. Uh in this parcel. As being that C D rating with very high runoff potential.
But that's not what we found. So our test bits, that's why we have to do our test bits. As you're. You're looking at a soil survey, that's a very broad stroke, and then you do it site-specific. So we start out with those soils, we do our analysis based on that. And then you do your percolation test and you do your site-specific deep soil tests.
Okay.
I'm not sure if you're the one who should address it, but can you pull up page thirty-five, please, which is a uh. Shows the heights. Are you the heights guy? Who's the heights guy? Okay, thank you. All right. Um yeah, page thirty-five. So I just want to understand this, because I guess we're supposed to be talking about the application and the specifics and the questions we have. So I just want to understand this page. From. Which direction am I looking at the upper? And which direction am I looking at the lower?
Okay, so the upper. Is cut through the courtyard. So if you're looking at the building from the road that you come in on, that's where the cut is through that building. So if if you could just look. You have a U-shaped building, it's cut like this. That's the upper one.
So I'm looking either at the front of the building or the back of the building. I'm looking at the.
Technically the front, correct.
I'm looking at the port cochere, okay.
So that's what that is with the arrow where it says entry.
Uh huh.
That's the front of the building and the port cochere, and the bottom one is a section through the port cochere and the building behind it.
Got it. So according to the lower one, it's fifty-two. Feet, five inches measured from the. Garage floor. Is that right?
Correct.
And so that's the, that's the height from. Weed Street as I drive by.
No, well, the grading isn't, isn't shown correctly here. So there, there is grading that comes up. Around the entire building.
Because you did mention a berm earlier, and I didn't know where on this.
So you can see like on the top one, you can see how it's kind of being pushed up. We're also pushing up earth along the sides. Creating some openness so fresh air can get in there to get rid of the noxious fumes. There's a lot in work. This is concept. Totally understand where your question is. I see the number, but. You can see the other dimensions, because if you have four floors at ten foot six. That's the height of the residential, and then we have a portion of the garage that will be exposed approximately four or five feet. So.
So why is the ground appear to be sloping downward? Uh in the lower drawing?
Because it is. It is sloping downward from the port cochere to the drive going into the building. Where it's, we're ramping up.
Okay.
To cover the garage and to block some of that, but we're trying to also keep. More than fifty percent of the perimeter of the garage needs to be open by fifty percent. In order for it to be a non-mechanically ventilated building.
Okay. I guess my next questions are, and maybe they should be directed at the fire marshal and the fire chief, um but are um. I I thought there was a fire implication of why we had set a forty-foot maximum height in this town. And a thirty-six maximum average height of a building. I think that's right, thirty-six and forty. Is that our number? Something like that. And so this is substantially above that, and I wondered whether that was a function of our trucks and our ladders. Or is that um and is it not relevant when we have sprinklers? So should I? Are you prepared to answer that, or should I just ask you offline about our our fire rules and fire guidelines for height with respect to height?
I'm not familiar with the why the zoning regs were written.
Okay.
I think that this new zoning, the transit-oriented multifamily, has a different height, and we're below that. So that's why we're not pushing up against the fifty-foot ceiling. We're not trying to push that. We try to stay below that. So that's why we're not pushing up against the fifty foot ceiling. We're not trying to push that. We try to stay below that.
The transit oriented development height ceilings came from somewhere else?
From your code.
From my code?
Yes. You have that in your code.
Okay, that's I guess that's my question is, do we have a forty foot maximum? Or do we now have a something higher? Maximum. And you're saying we've already wr- written that exception.
Correct.
Okay. And I just want to know whether there's a, you know, whether we did that with a full understanding of uh, I'm too new on.
No, no, and that's fair.
Exception came from.
Yeah, no, no, that's fair. And I, you know, I'll just sort of reiterate again. I mean. We had a lot of debate and I don't want to go backwards about Euclidean codes and the subjectivity and this, that and the other. At the end of the day. The world has changed to new more of a form based code. We're typically at a corner, like if you go to Manhattan. That's how their code is written. Buildings are taller at the corner, smaller in the middle theoretically, you know. And the same thing here. I mean, we're talking about not a high density building. High density is not even remotely close to this. This is low density to maybe the front end of mid density. And it's contributing to approximately two hundred people. And many of which are probably going to come from within your community. So it's a, you know, it's a balancing act. This is not just a. You know, for outsiders only, we're hoping that people who are downsizing, if you look at the size of these units as well, I think it's very important to note. These are not small units. These are not small bathrooms. These are very gracious units. And they're very much in keeping with the lifestyle of people that live here. So if somebody is going to downsize. Like my children are all leaving me, you know, after, you know, the the child rearing years, right? And at some point, what do I need a house for? But if there's a two thousand square foot apartment, eighteen hundred square foot apartment available. That's within proximity of my home. That may be a very real, you know, opportunity. So I think that's something to to consider as well. These are very gracious sized units.
I I'm I'm still sort of focused on the height though, and I understand transit oriented development, you know, down in. Uh on Main Street where I have commercial buildings. That those buildings may exceed the forty foot height.
That's fair.
But none of the buildings around this building come anywhere near that. And I.
If if you look at the world we live in, smart growth development, transit oriented development, when you're within. A third to a half a mile, they say within one mile of transit. That's the general rule of thumb. One mile of transit, you should be given parking discounts. You should be given opportunities to create. Socioeconomic diversity within your unit types. You should be able to do things differently. That's the world we live in. That's not a New Canaan thing. That's not a Connecticut thing. That's not a New York thing. This is across the country. This is happening. And the reason is, is you want to have what density we're proposing or something of the same ilk closer to transit than not. If this was a half a mile, a mile further, where you're now well a mile or so outside of the town. I apologize if you don't call your, what do you call your urban core?
The magic.
The downtown, the magic.
We well, there's we actually have magic circle is a very specific portion of the downtown.
I got you. We had different terminology for magic circles when I was in college, but um. The magic circle, your downtown deserves to include your community. And that's what we're trying to do. The community wants this. There are developments within this magic circle, your downtown, your core, that leased up like this. New apartments because there's a high demand.
I don't think you're going to get an argument from us that we want affordable housing and that we want greater density. We also want to are struggling with the fact that on paper, you're counting the 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 number of yards from the train station. And saying this is downtown. And to many of the letter writers, you know, and people in this room.
I understand.
It's not downtown. And that's the whole.
I get it. Well, part of it, part of it is education. Part of it, it is a struggle. Change is.
Why we're struggling.
Change is a struggle. I'm not here to try to make you believe what I believe or what.
We're struggling with calling this downtown.
Understood.
And that's that's the whole.
And that's fair.
So that's why we take exception when he says that we're exclusionary and on page seventeen racist and everything else. And we're like, you know.
No one called you, no one called you a racist. So let's be, let's be realistic.
Page seventeen.
Okay, well, he shouldn't have called you a racist. Now, uh at the end of the day, should you be more.
Appreciate.
In inclusionary? Yes.
We want to be more inclusionary.
So then.
Me, but we look at it site by site.
Understood.
Parcel by parcel.
Understood.
And every time somebody comes in here and says, I want a swimming pool because my neighbor has a swimming pool, we say, not so fast. Show us your site versus his site.
Correct.
And you know what? We're never bound by the fact that we gave the neighbor a swimming pool.
You have a unique setting. You have very few residents that live at this intersection or near it, or even near this property. Very few people will actually be impacted. It's an infinitesimal, let me just finish. Please let me just finish for one second.
But I do want to respond to.
That's fine. There's an infinitesimal amount of increase of potential population that come from outside. Let alone inside your community. So we're talking about negligible traffic, negligible increase in population. And you have very few people that live within proximity. That is not easy to find in your community.
I grant you that the number of direct neighbors who are affected by this, you know, the ones who are within a hundred yards maybe. Uh is is uh is a small amount. But I would argue that this is a very important interest section in our town through which. One third of our town pass through it multiple times a day.
And let me ask you.
And so it affects a great number of people.
Okay, let's go there. How does that traffic flow? Don't answer, please. How does that traffic flow? And you're all's point of view, I heard three or four cars got backed up at a stop sign. When I hear that, that sounds very light. Okay, even six or eight cars would still be light at certain times of the day. So let's let's be.
In total, where we count the the stacking, we've talked to you about the sight lines.
Okay.
We've talked to you about the the.
Crosswalks.
The speed at which they go through. We've talked about the crosswalks. We've talked about the changing traffic patterns in that area. And the sum total of which makes it one of the more dangerous intersections in our town.
Therefore, what is the most common traffic calming safety device you could introduce?
Identity development?
No. Tighter roads, slower traffic, crosswalk types, mable tabling them, lighting. Those are the things that slow things down that calm traffic. If you have a problem. You really should hire this man right here. He knows how to do traffic calming, as do I. And I think if you do have a speeding problem, a crosswalk, introducing a little bit tighter constraints. I used to live in this amazing historic town called Old Town Alexandria, Virginia. It's wonderful. Georgetown and Washington DC, Dupont Circle. I could list all these great places in my hometown. And you know what they do? They tighten it up. And you know what they say? If you don't like it, drive on another road. Cause there are other roads. There are other roads to get to downtown.
Just for the record, I went to Georgetown. I've been to Old Town many, many times. I've been to Dupont Circle. We're talking about a city.
No, 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 I understand, but it's the principle. I'm it's principle. I can give you smaller towns, Lovitzville, Virginia. We tighten up the roads.
On most of the on the roads in town, we employ as a traffic calming measure, we let the arbor viti grow right out into the road. And if you don't want to get your suburban scratched, you slow down and you move into the middle on Greenlee Road. We don't have that opportunity at this intersection on either of these roads. We don't have a really good traffic calming opportunity.
Maybe there is an opportunity. But instead of saying there isn't one, maybe there is one that's part of this.
But what we're what we're talking about here is we we all agree we can't. Correct human uh nature of speeding or issues with uh.
God knows our police try.
Well, we can try. But what what what's at hand here is we're now introducing a development. Which will make that intersection worse. Uh that's, I'm sorry, that's.
That's fair. That's that's enough. That's subjective opinion. It is. It's negligible. But it's negligible. It's barely identifiable. No, that's the facts. Those are the numbers. I'm sorry, you have to look at them more closely. So uh miss Mr. Chairman, I'd so I I have some questions that probably are best addressed to Mr. Uh Dandrea. And Ms. Copeland. So it would be.
I have a further question with the gentleman here.
Where'd you go? Yeah, what? Let's finish. I'm sorry, I forgot. Okay, Mr. Eisen. Let's finish with Mr. Eisen then.
But um we could bring back the um overhead of the uh site, please. Looking down the bird's eye view.
So that'd be page thirty one, uh I think six.
Any one of those would be thirty one.
Yeah, thirty one or six, please.
Thirty one?
Thirty one.
If memory serves, sir, you uh mentioned some of the uh called sustainability aspects of the development that has been. On safe ground so far. Um looking at the uh C shaped building as a big flat roof. To me, it screams so well. Didn't hear that word coming out of your mouth.
Hasn't been addressed at this point. Yeah, there's no reason to not address it. It just hasn't. We're too early in the concept. To get into the weeds of every sustainable feature.
Are you planning to make this an LED?
We will use LED lighting, absolutely.
No, L E D, you know.
Oh, LEED certified? No, no, no. We can score it, but we're not certifying it. LEED, with all due respect, has had its heyday. There is numerous other. Um groups out there.
Another one.
But sure, well, yeah, exactly. Yeah. And we're using them, but typically we're scoring, not going through the process. And I'll be perfectly candid. They're a very difficult organization. They're a guild. And they want you to pay homage to them. Get down on your hands and knees and kiss their ring. Thank you for nodding. And that's not something we're going to do. We don't get a penny more in rent. People don't think we're better. What we can do though. Is do the right thing, which we've done on other buildings, which is create sustainable buildings using the right types of materials and and. And and promote it that way. And landscaping and indigenous, you know, plants, you know, working with low impact development. All those things, you know, there's a lot baked into this that's being thoughtful about site development and building.
I I plan to fund my last question. I also uh planning to install. Uh charger stations for electric vehicles and if so.
Yes, we haven't determined the total number yet. Right now, we have, I think it's what, eight, six, something like that. The the what we're doing in all of our buildings, because the world hasn't caught up to electric completely. But we'll make provisions to be able to provide more in the future. We'll have enough of power and electricity, but you know. Rolling backouts in California are paralyzing their electric car consumption. So we also have to be very careful about not overloading our grid.
Those are my questions.
Um can we return back to the uh parking garage? I think Lynn, could you?
I think that is thirty four or five.
The and the exterior rendering.
Oh.
Um you mentioned that the parking garage is um naturally ventilated, fifty percent. Um the rendering shows glazing.
It's not glazing. It's window frames to make it look like the rest of the building, but there is oh pat, it's open to air.
So.
We're going to put in.
Security wise, how?
We'll have we'll have screens in there that are that allow free air movement.
Okay.
So to that end, on on the actually, right there, that page, that cross section. The the garage entrance level off of Elm's. That apron is about nine foot six or in that range coming into the garage level.
Yeah.
And that's nine feet.
What?
Nine feet.
Nine foot six, yeah. And then it's, and when you get to the courtyard, it's sloping up, but. The sidewalk and the and the topography along Elm approaching weed and then along weed is up at that elevated level, correct?
It 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 varies because it's.
What you're showing.
I'm not showing sidewalks in any of this. So this is.
Oh, no, I'm not talking about sidewalks.
Okay, I thought you just, sorry.
It's it's showing the cross section. First of all, I don't know what that canopy projection is on the lower section, but.
That's the port cochere.
On the Weed Street side?
No, that's at our front entrance in our courtyard.
No, I understand that. What's the one on the Weed Street side, on the right side of section two?
Uh this, that's the same. Port cochere at the front entrance. It's not on Weed Street. It's inside our courtyard.
I understand. That's Weed Street.
Could you go to the site plan on thirty uh whatever, thirty one, please?
According to right grade, that's where grade should be.
Okay, so if you look at the site plan.
Uh huh.
This, right, thank you. If you had put the white cursor down, there's the pork cook. Nope, keep coming up. There you go. That's the port cochere drop off area.
So is there some sort of.
That's not on Weed Street.
What's the one on Weed?
So that's a patio. That's not a raised canopy uh that's part of the building.
So what is shown on section two of being some sort of a projecting canopy?
It's it's not. It's just, you know, an old drawing. Yeah, yeah.
So on Weed Street. Where is grade on that section?
It it varies. Like I said, it comes up against the building. So from the sidewalk, we'll berm up. So that we cover part of the garage, then we'll have the windows. So if this is the sidewalk and Weed Street, it'll have a slight berm. And that'll be the garage wall. And there'll be a window on the upper portion and and ground below it. In in terms of the building construction overall, so is this fire resistant, non combustible, lightweight construction? Can you get a little bit more into the construction type? The garage is type one, cast in place concrete. There'll be a podium above the garage. Cast in place transfer slab, eleven inch plus or minus. And then above that will be type five construction, which is wood frame. It will be fully suppressed NFPA thirteen, you know, will be following all codes accordingly.
So to that end, um if it's going to be sprinkler, apparently have two stairwells at north and south. Ends of the line, so to speak. It's it's about four hundred and fifty, four hundred and seventy feet between them along that corridor.
Mm hmm.
How's that code compliant?
We got two fifty to either direction. With a fully suppressed building.
But your limitation was a hundred and twenty five feet.
Two hundred and fifty feet fully suppressed in type five.
I thought it, what we're saying is, I thought we thought it was two hundred and fifty between the two egress points, a hundred and twenty five.
Minimum one half the diagonal. So we cover that. And 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 quite honestly, this is a diagram. We're working through all that. When we get to schematic design. First of all, my client needs to chime in on this stuff. It's not like something I just bake and and do it by myself. But yeah, I mean, if we want to pull the stairs a little closer, if fire is concerned that they have too much of a travel. Once they get inside each, you know, elevator core, that's not insignificant. That's not a hard thing to change because of the way the building is shaped.
Will there be enough? Um if it's sprinkler, it's going to be on the town water supply connection. Um is there enough volume and pressure in that water system to adequately serve this?
I I assume there is. We've had that conversation.
Letter from Aquarian in the file. Could you um talk a little bit about the amenities, you know, your back of house spaces? I I look at the trash area. Uh seems very small, the elevator room. Um I realize this is very, very conceptual.
Yeah, they are. They're more than they are because the way trash is done today, it's very different. They come in with an electric pole machine. And they'll come in, depending on how property management manages the property. Every other day, typically trash is removed from a conditioned room to keep smells, rats, all that other kind of stuff out. But we will have a recycling bin, we'll have a trash bin, and it'll be rolled out and disposed of accordingly. And there is more than adequate room to meet that requirement. And the elevator machine rooms today are nothing. They're a closet. You hang a panel on a wall for a gen two elevator. So they're not elevator machine rooms like we did fifteen, twenty years ago. It's a a gen two elevator requires a wall panel. Literally, it's like this big. And it gets stuck to a piece of plywood and it's about this deep.
Is it geared or hydraulic?
No, it's not. It's tr- it's a, it's 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 all done through the rails.
Mm hmm.
So if you look at um Otis has a a great website to show how gen two works. But uh we still have a hoist beam and there's still propulsion, but it's not a hydraulic and it's not traction. It's a gen two.
Okay. Well, what about simple things like deliveries? Uh you know, where where do?
We have drop off pickup right outside the port cochere dedicated to that.
And they'll come in. Is there an area where you can actually put a box?
There's a lobby and it will have uh a mailroom and a package room.
Okay. And you have two elevators, right? And what happens when one elevator's down and um.
The building only, the building needs one elevator. Okay, that's all it needs. We put in two.
I feel sorry for the people that live there.
We put in two for redundancy for that very reason. I I have buildings that are twice this size with two elevators and. And it works fine because of the gen two speed, things move quickly. You also have to keep in mind, when people live one floor above, they often never go to the elevator lobby. It's really for the the two or three floors above that. So there's actually a reduction on the demand.
What's the, um, what's the proposed solution for mechanical here, meaning? There's no roof plan in here. The roof plan.
Split system. It'll be a split system.
Be a forest of condenser.
Not a forest. There's a hundred. I mean, that's a big roof, you know. There's, I could line them up and and you do a bulk plane study. You'll never see them be taller than this and the parapet's this tall. So, yeah, I mean, you're talking about a very small amount of 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 condensers on the roof. Comparatively speaking, if you know what I mean. I got a three hundred and fifty unit building in Denver under construction. Yes, it's almost the same footprint, maybe a little bit bigger. There will be a forest of condensers, but, you know.
How high is the parapet?
Uh, it ranges just depending on where in the elevation you're looking, but somewhere in that, you know, two, two foot range.
So there's no access up there?
Access to the roof, yes, there'll be access through, not publicly accessible, just for maintenance, correct?
Question if I may, Commissioner Chris, on the on the trash room, you mentioned refuse. You mentioned recyclables, right? Oh, didn't mention compostables, you have a composting.
To to.
Serious about.
It's fine. I I think that's fair. Maybe at the next level of of digging into weeds, we can talk about that. At a very conceptual level, that's a pretty difficult thing for us to pinpoint. That requires a place to do it. Uh, property management, uh, does the community even identify with it? You know, there's a lot that goes into deciding whether there's a compostable component. I just think it's a little premature with all due respect.
We try to keep the trash down.
Fair enough. That's fair. Understand. Totally agree.
I've got a question about the kind of the design, the aesthetic of the building. How how does this respond to our community character? Uh, you know, this is a and I don't wanna be crude rude, but, um, you know, it's a very institutional looking building. It's very symmetrical. Bozarts, I mean, it's just, it's it's not New Canaan. There's no, there's no attempt.
It's no, no, not even close to Bozarts with all due respect.
There's no, there's.
It's lap siding. It's got five quarter trim boards around the window with a sill and a head, just like every window in every single family house and apartment building you have in your community. We have siding, just like you have. We have masonry, just like you have. There's a base, there's a metal, there's a top, and we're using those same pieces of your architectural vocabulary. So respectfully, I have to disagree.
Well, I respectfully disagree.
Okay, I can show you a hospital is an institutional building.
Similar materials to other buildings, houses in New Canaan. But the way you've put them together, the composition, the density, the height, I mean, it's it's it's.
Please, please, I'm happy to engage with you at any time on this. And I would love for you to, you know, educate me on what you're talking about. I wanna hold this room up over this, but I'm happy to talk with you more more directly if that would be appropriate.
That would be great.
Great.
But what what I also found though was in in the books, you gave examples of affordable housing. And frankly, those examples of affordable housing largely looked a lot better than this.
That's subjective.
I don't know. Yes, I guess it is subjective, but.
Your opinion.
No, I I think many people would agree with me.
It could be many people's opinion. It also can be other people's opinion. So, I mean.
Yeah, but you're trying to get away with that.
No, I'm not.
Yeah, you are.
Okay, again, I don't wanna hold the room up. If we wanna have a design session, I'll be here anytime. And I'm happy to draw with you.
Yeah, I I just think it was a drawback of you including examples of affordable housing, which look a heck of a lot better than that.
No, we'll be more careful in the future about what we select and put in our books.
I think you should think, um, parking, one point eight spaces, um, and this is transit oriented development.
It's way too high compared to the rest of the country. It's amazing.
How'd you come up with it?
Cuz that's how it fits with the bedrooms. It's how it fits with your zoning, but you're you're, it's antiquated with all due respect.
So what should it be?
My opinion is you should do less. Okay, and that's how the world's working. And it works because if people will use transit, which they should, and you guys have a great train system here. Why not take advantage of it and actually do transit orient? This type of ratio is something we see non transit oriented. This is typical marketplace, um, parking solution.
But that's that's also a an urban opinion.
No.
I I so if if there's a resident here in town, even if they are, and I I happen to be a landlord in town, I happen to have tenants in town that we use the train to go to work in Stanford, they all own cars. It doesn't matter if they're using the train to go to work, they still own.
That's why we're at one point eight.
I understand, but you're saying it's antiquated.
I do think it's antiquated. Again, it's my opinion, sort of like my institutional building.
Is there any ability to, um, make real underground parking and reduce the height of the overall structure?
I can't answer that. That's you're you're changing the metrics of a real estate transaction now from, um, uh, an eighteen to twenty thousand dollar space to a forty five, fifty thousand dollar space. It's a massive, massive undertaking. And who knows what we run into when we dig deeper in this environment? It's gonna be all stone. So you might wanna ask the client about that, but.
So pursuant on that, I I think it's it's actually interesting. The the heart, the biggest objection I see in the letters we get and the comments we get is the massing. And when we say and and the height, and it's not like, you know, what's around it. I don't think we're fundamentally opposed to multifamily housing because the biggest difference between this and and Pride's Crossing, a few hundred yards away is the fact that this is fifty fifty feet high and that's about a forty foot, you know, or less high. But that's multifamily. It's a big, long building that looks like a bunch of townhouses. If you eliminated that level and dropped this thing ten feet, it would look a whole lot more like Hatfield Mews and Pride's Crossing. And I think that's why he's saying, can you just lower it into the ground? If that's expensive, can you eliminate the parking spaces? Can you get this thing closer to a forty foot? So it looks more like the rest of.
I don't think so. Can we can we keep it in the forties? Yes. Can we make it thirty nine or forty? I don't think so.
Okay. But in my opinion, that is one of the biggest objections that we're gonna run into.
The the negligible height difference. And and again, I forgive me sounding like a professor. Forty feet versus forty seven feet, walking down the street in perspective, we're not, we don't look at the world in elevation. We don't work at the world like I'm standing here and I'm six feet off the ground and I see everything perfectly flat and straight. There's contours, there's perspective. Nobody is going to perceive six or seven feet from the street. I'm sorry, I have to respectfully disagree.
But this zoning body.
That's right.
Undered undertook a rewrite of our entire zoning book practically over the issue of loom factor. And that's what we did. What was the year? Help me out.
Two thousand seven.
Thank you. Two thousand seven, we decided height mattered so much. We wrote the whole book over over loom factor and we started to give back certain things like, um, um, coverage. Um, porch exemptions in order to try and get away from looming right up against the property line over your neighbor. So when you say that height's not important, it is in this town. It's a longstanding history.
And that's fair, but we're not.
Trying to get our heights back into.
Look at the.
Houses are in proportion with.
Look at the shadow study and see if it's looming.
Okay.
Please.
I will, I will.
I would sort of sort of John Chris again. There are other large multifamily developments in town that other people see. You say you don't walk down the street and see height. Other people do. They've said so that I've heard. Um, I would also note that the whole transit oriented still sort of I'm having trouble to wrap my mind around. It hasn't been determined to me that a train only that goes essentially to downtown Stanford or Manhattan is something you use all the time. If you wanna go to Wilton, I've been to downtown Wilton, number of times in my life I go relatively frequently. If I were to take the train, it'd probably take me four hours.
Okay.
Each way, so it's.
I hear you, so. Let me give you two answers. I'll give you your two answers. One, I never said people don't perceive height. What I said is it's going to be difficult for people to perceive six or seven feet. When we're talking about forty, forty six feet, if you're talking about fifteen, twenty feet versus forty, yes, of course. But I'm saying it will be negligible. The human eye is not that trained. And by the way, people don't walk down the street looking up like this. They walk down the street like this. So I'm just trying to be realistic. And as it relates to transit oriented development. If you don't disagree with me, look at smart growth development, look at TOD principles. The ULI has great books. It will help you better understand why we're trying to do what we're doing. And I'm happy to bring that.
I think that this is eighteen feet higher than Irene Barrack's house next to it. So that is something I'd like to know for the next meeting. I think Irene Barrack's house is thirty six feet high on average. And I think that this is eighteen feet higher than that. And that's the closest neighbor. That's the one that 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 parking lot on the north side.
Snowmelt.
With the snowmelt is up against Irene Barrack's house.
I don't think it's even thirty six.
Okay, so I'm gonna go thirty six versus fifty four and I'm getting eighteen.
Well, we're we're not fifty four. We're not fifty four and it's not eighteen feet.
Well, that's why I asked about the cross section and it shows fifty four on.
Also shows forty two and it also shows forty seven cuz the grade changes.
Okay, let's 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 keep it moving.
Do you have any more for me?
That's my question for the commissioners. You good? Okay, thank you, sir.
So thank you.
Thank you, sir. So wh- where were we? Gonna go with Mr. DeAndrea and Miss Copeland, Miss Copeland.
Okay.
Uh, so maybe the best way to do it.
Mr. DeAndrea, DeAndrea, yeah, step to the podium.
Eric. Okay. So so my first question is about, um, the level of coordination between both of you, um, when you were doing, Mr. DeAndre, when you're doing the engineering study, measuring, um, peak flows, average flows, capacity utilization, not only just the sewer main for this application, but also the lateral. How much coordination was it? And and I read all the kind of most updated results. Um, how much coordinate coordination was that between your two parties? And do you validate the numbers that, um, Mr. DeAndrea came up with or is that independent? You can't validate that.
Well, the results that were from flow assessment, and that's for the flow meters that were put in. Those values and those calculations we've reviewed. And, um, we don't see any inconsistencies in what what they presented. And candidly, we haven't had problems with um, those sewer mains in that area, so we were not surprised by the results. Um, as to the calculations for the rest of the site for stormwater management, we are still in the process. This is, we have not, um, yet finished our review of the current revisions that have been sent to us.
What's holding it up, Miss Copeland?
We just received them last week. At the end of last week. They, I think it was just a miscommunication cuz they are dated May eighteenth, but they weren't submitted to us until the fifteenth of June. So, um, respectfully, this is a big project to review and it takes a little bit longer. We have gone through it. I haven't been able to, you know, put together my comments yet, but there are still issues that still need to be addressed in order to be consistent with our drainage policy.
Correct.
Um, and we still also have, you know, open questions regarding site geometry. Um, you know, and some of the issues that we've already listed that have not been yet addressed to, um, our um, to meet our requirements, one of them being ADA and Proag and some of the site, um, issues like, for example, the, um, access to the crosswalk that was talked about earlier. Right now, those are accessed only by steps. So, um, in order to really be able to make that inclusive of everyone. There has to be ADA, um, accessibility there. Parking right now is shown for ADA is only subsurface, not for visitors. At least marked up on the plan. So it could just be that there is a plan, it just hasn't been fully vetted. So what our process is, is that we now take the revised documents, we update our comment review letter. And then the opportunity is given to the applicant and their consultants to come back. And that's why it's an iterative process, which ultimately is, you know, our goal is to make it so it is consistent with our policy and our our town requirements.
It, I totally agree. And it's a, it's a process and it may involve different disciplines too. Um, earlier today, I reached out to this couple and then said it'd be great if you need to reach out to us. We like to sit down together in person and go over item by item. And then we'll take it back to the team. And if it's us that has to address it, we will. If it's one of the other, uh, professionals, we'll do it that way as well. So. Uh, and it's very consistent like in any other project we've worked on in New Canaan.
Gotcha. And and so I also have some questions about, uh, that are just gonna surround the sewer system, the wastewater treatment plant. And I think we do have purview over that. Although some of this is probably gonna be under the review of the W's PCA. I think we also do have under Connecticut statute, general statute eight dash two, I think we also do have a lot of purview in this commission over whether or not, um, infrastructure, infrastructure plan support, um, proposed development. So the the these questions are really in that vein. Um, so last October, uh, so two thousand twenty one, there was a, uh, I think there was a, there was a presentation by James Rogers or at least a discussion between James Rogers, who's our superintendent of the Water Pollution Control. Authority, or no, not authority.
Treatment facility.
Treatment facility, thank you. Uh, that had to do with me having a two hundred thousand dollar contract. Big nut, uh, with ACOM to study challenges that we were facing in terms of meeting or straining the capacity that we have, um, in our water treatment, uh, plant. Are you familiar with that?
I I am familiar with it and we are, ACOM is in the process right now. They actually have flow meters and flow set, using flow assessments as well. Um, and those meters are to document during storm events. The increase in, um, flow in our system that ultimately reaches the treatment plant. And so what, um, their assessment is doing is further supporting the fact that what Jimmy Jim Rogers has seen at the treatment plant is that in dry weather conditions, the plant turns as expected and has sufficient capacity, sufficient capacity for the additional flows that are proposed here. It's wet weather conditions that are our challenges right now. And so what this assessment has been, it's, it wasn't just since October of of twenty twenty one.
Good.
Mr. Rogers has actually been trying, um, you know, has seen these, um, indicators at the treatment plant for a while now. Um, and it has been a discussion. It's just that we've only recently been able to actually take this next step to start, start to identify where within town that we can look at um, mitigation measures for influence infiltration. And a lot of municipalities are having the same um, problem. In the past, there's been opportunities to do what are referred to as smoke tests to see where there are illegal connections. Um, and so.
Like some pumps or.
Right. And so you get a call to the fire department, you come out, you're like, oh, well, it actually turns out you have an illegal connection. And, um, those work for about a week or so, and then remarkably the illegal connection gets reconnected. Right. So what we're trying to do is holistically as a town, see where there are opportunities to, um, mitigate this because we in our peak storm events are becoming more intense. Which means though we might have the same amount of rainfall for a storm, it's happening in a shorter duration of time. And it's that intensity is which causes the flooding that we see across town. So what's happening is is that if we can start to, um, put less stress on our treatment plant by identifying areas where we can either, um, you know, prevent the inflow or, um, address infiltration, so older, older or older pipes that could be lined, et cetera. Um, that's what we're trying to do right now. We do not have a report yet back from ACOM. That's not scheduled. Um, I believe Jim will be able to tell better, but I don't think that's scheduled until the fall.
Okay.
Be able to get that report back.
And what are the potential public health issues if we keep on adding, uh, additional flow to our existing system?
So, I mean, to that, right now, we are addressing our current, um, lows that are coming in. We use, Jimmy has the opportunity to open up multiple tanks at the treatment plant. So when a storm, um, is on the horizon, he does take into measures. Um, but what could happen is if we have. Um, but what could happen is if we have a failure to our permit, or um. There is illicit discharge basically that happens is that that would then impact our permit. With the treatment plant, and Jim could tell you a little bit more of kind of what those implications are. Um, but they would be contained and would be a requirement that we would have with the.
Okay. So if there is backup in our sewage system overall, which is, you know. And according to Mr. Rogers, we've reached the limit of what our treatment plant can handle twice in two thousand twenty-one. And I imagine.
Because of a storm event.
Because of storm events.
And that, that should be clarified, and it really is because.
But if there's backup in a sewer system, just thinking of it on a residential basis, on a house by house basis, what are the potential public health problems that can happen?
So it's not a backup in the sewer system, so the conveyance system. It's actually the volume that's coming into the treatment plant.
Okay.
So there hasn't been indications really that there's um, a challenge within the conveyance system.
Okay. And in terms of existing capacity of that system and, and flows, there was a study that was done in, in nineteen ninety-two, I believe, by Whitman and Howard. Commissioned by the town, in which they found that our average daily sewer flow. From nineteen ninety to nineteen ninety-two, in terms of uh, average flow, millions of gallons per day. Was around one point one five million. Do you know what our average daily sewer flow roughly is now? With the town around thirty percent greater in population?
I can pull out the report that was recently done by ACOM, because they did update their analysis of the treatment. And it's generally around there. Keep in mind that over time, with new construction, we have water-saving fixtures. It's not necessarily that unusual that our volumes are still close to the same as they were. Um, you know, historically, ten, fifteen, twenty years ago.
Okay.
Um, but I, we can pull out that report, because it was recently circulated. I just don't remember off the top of my head what that number was.
And then just one last question for now. In terms of thinking about um. Where we are in terms of flows versus capacity overall. Correct me if this is wrong, it's really important to think about peak flows, because you can have these kind of unusual storm events or other types of events. I imagine there might even be a secular change. With more people working from home with COVID, um, not having to go into New York City as much. But things are going to change. Things are going to change on a secular basis from some of the kind of patterns that we've seen historically.
I mean, we see patterns at Thanksgiving and at the Super Bowl.
Sure, but, but what, I think the point that I was going to get to is that it's really peak flows that I'm most concerned about from a public health standpoint. Versus average flows.
Right.
So if we were in nineteen ninety-two, I think the report then that I mentioned. Said that we had highest monthly inflow of one point seven million gallons per day. And again, I, I hear you in terms of efficiencies and changes in technology that. Maybe, you know, the millions of gallons per day hasn't, isn't that much different? But that's an average. I'm concerned about peak flows. So can you talk a little bit more about peak flows and what kind of constraints? That can burden our system with, and again, how that might dovetail back to any public self, public health issues?
Right. So right now, the peak flows that we've been experiencing are during wet weather conditions. So that is the real reason why, you know, as a town, we've initiated this influence infiltration study. It was been in the works for years now. Um, and, but we've been able to finally get that underway, which is great. Um, as it relates to a new proposal that's coming into, that wants to contribute into our system. Right now, we don't have a mechanism for future projects that are coming into the system. But ultimately, what I would like to see from this INI study and other municipalities have done something similar. Is that there are areas that will need mitigation. And there are some what would be referred to as low hanging fruit, where your best bang for your dollar would go. And if we could for future developments, and it wouldn't, you know, apply for, for, for this application, but for future developments, we would like to. Bring before our town fathers the opportunity that there would be some sort of either fee paid. To the town for the equivalent dollar per gallon added to the system. Um, and, or, or something along those lines, or a project that could be selected by the applicant. Um, and that would be done in order to try to address as many um, opportunities in town to reduce. Those peaks into our system.
Okay.
Because right now, um, the applicant for. Um, the seven fifty-one, we has come in and they actually do apply a peaking factor. To their sanitary sewer loads. So that is contemplated in their analysis when they do an evaluation of what the available capacity is in. The conveyance system, and when they. When they model their proposed, they put that peaking factor in. But what we cannot do, and there's not a model to do, is to then address that in a wet weather condition. So that's really where we're stressed, is during storm conditions.
Okay.
I have. I just have a couple add-on questions. So in my experience, isn't it typical that a INI study is usually then followed? I mean, assuming you find issues, which you probably will, you wouldn't have taken on the study by a sewer system evaluation survey? So the next steps with ACOM. Jim has, you know, I will have to get back to you on kind of what their next protocol is, but they are going to be coming out with a report. Um, and the report would have the recommendations for the next steps. Um, and so at that point, you know, we'd be able to know a little bit more, but they are, from what I understand. The location of the meters um, have given them sufficient information to have a good first step. For where the next um, recommended mitigation actions would be. Okay, because then I, my, also my experience tells me that after you do the sewer system evaluation survey. Then you kind of end up with your options for mitigation and, you know, what's more expensive, whether it's improving capacity at the plant, whether it's fixing pipes. And you have to kind of start to weigh the options and which, which way we're going to go. So it seems like we're at the beginning of a process, and we probably have a long way to go until we know exactly. What kind of dollars we're looking at to improve our overall system. Agreed. And there are some municipalities that actually just put, and that's why I mentioned, you know, a dollar per gallon. Um, on it as, you know, very similar to fee and lieu for parking and, you know, et cetera, that, that goes ultimately to. Um, a pot that would be used by the town in order to address some of these measures. Then my, my other question on this is um. In the application, there was a sewer summary, I guess, or a summary report. That seems like it's largely just based on a conversation from two thousand sixteen with a prior public works director. Saying that there's enough capacity. Is that the standard way we handle requests that are adding capacity to our system? So there has been an updated, that report referenced. An older report, so we had um, ACOM update that report, and they have similar conclusions that were made at that time. Um, and that report is available on our website. Uh, okay. Lynn, is it on our website?
So I think um, the applicant has only submitted an updated report to the WPCA application, but not necessarily to the eight thirty G application.
Okay, so we have to look on the WPCA applications website. Okay.
Just have a quick question about the uh, the existing sewer line, the six inches that's in the easement. Have you looked into that, or uh, do you know if ACOM or what, is, is that adequate for a development of this size?
So that would be up to the applicant to um. You know, give a little bit more information on that, and that is the private collector system that's in the easement that you're referring to, right? Yeah, so, Lynn, do you want?
I believe that's in our sewer report, correct, Jen? Right. We, we, um, we analyzed that, that um, private line through the easement. Or capacity, if we were to take this development and put it in there. And then just recently this week, we um, we were asked by uh, DPW to um, clean and video inspect the uh. Truck line going down Elm, and then also the private line going through the easement. And we did, we completed that, we still have to get the CDs to her, um, but we found those to be in great shape and clean. So uh, we, we could use that lateral, or, or I don't like, I don't want to call that a lateral, we could use that collector if we had to. Now, no breaks and no debris.
Well, then, could you explain to me why you're spending the money to put in a new line and have the sewer extended?
To just simply take it out of the private easement. It's uh, it's just a design, this uh, design decision that we felt. Um, a development like this with the number of units, let's just take it out to the street. Why not? We're only a hundred and thirty-five feet away from the um, main in the street. So the, the thought was just say, well, let's just take it out of the easement. Um, not that it can't handle it. Uh, when we made that decision, we hadn't done all the research on it, we hadn't done all the video inspections and things like that. To us, that was just a very, very short distance to go. It made good engineering sense to us. Again, I want to stress this, that it's not a maintenance issue. I know there was a comment made that, you know, geez, it's going to burden the system. No. These are new pipes growing into the roadway, they're PVC pipes, they're of the right diameter. Uh, they're installed correctly, they're air tested, and there's just no maintenance on them after that.
If, if I may though, if, if there is ample capacity as, as appears based on, I mean, we haven't seen. Um, the televising of them, but if it's ample capacity, good condition, collector system. It would be our position that, that that would be the connection point, that there would be no extension of main with an Elm Street. That that is not something that we want to take on. Um, in, in our, in Elm Street right now, in our public right of way.
This is exactly what we're talking about. So we, we get together, we'll discuss these things, bring it back to our, our client, the applicant, and, and make those final decisions.
Okay.
Um, can I just ask one question about the drainage report before we let Tim go? Um. So I'll be honest, drainage reports are not my specialty, so maybe I'm just not understanding. What I'm seeing here, but overall, it sounds like you're saying that the proposed drainage system is not going to cause any adverse impacts to the site. And um, and yet, when I look at these numbers for the peak flow rate and the runoff volume, I see all of them decreasing except point of concern B. Where it seems to increase.
On the volume.
Yes, well, both runoff volume and.
And I believe that.
Well, some of the peak flow rate is zero, but some of it goes up, one of it goes up to a hundred and thirty percent.
That's on the volume.
Okay.
Right. There's, there's two, two different things we're looking at, and, and the drainage um. Criteria in New Canaan is to look at the peak rate of discharge, and it actually says or volume. In this case, when we look at the entire site, and you look at the volume numbers. Leaving the site, the volume numbers for the entire site are less than other existing conditions. But in that one location, point of concern B. Um, because of how we're trying to route this around, that's the one location where we have an increase in volume. But for all points of concern, there's a decrease in the peak rate of discharge, which in our opinion is the more important criteria.
Okay, and um, looking at the map, it looks like point of concern B is basically the intersection of Weiden Elm.
Goes right, yes, it's a direct connection to the manhole in that intersection.
Okay, so that's.
Not, not to the street, not discharging onto the street.
Okay, so it's just, that, that was my question. It's not, we're not flooding that intersection, that's already going to have cars in it. Thank you.
So, so one thing I'm just trying to wrap my head around some possible inconsistencies. Mr. DeAndrea, when you talked about like, you know, the hundred year flood. That, that even if we under um. Of that kind of really kind of fluky exaggerated condition, that there would be enough capacity. Within these, these pipes, and even the, even just if we did use the six inch PVC pipes that are existing.
Sorry, are we talking about sanitary sewer or a storm drainage?
So storm drainage, right now. So that there's enough capacity there such that we're not going to have a lot of storm runoff that's going to cause maybe a freezing condition during the winter, make the roads really icy, cause public health issues. Or public safety issues, I should say. So I'm, I'm kind of, I'm trying to reconcile. That, the, the hundred year flood scenario. We're still okay with the. We're not even okay in two thousand twenty-one with a couple of storms twice. We're already kind of straining the system in terms of, you know, stormwater infiltration of the system overall. And, you know, our wastewater treatment plant facility is already at capacity, already strained twice in two thousand twenty-one. So how do I reconcile those two things?
Well, you, you, with, with this development, you're, you, you seem like you're still trying to mix the two. So.
Okay.
We have a sanitary sewer that's going directly, um, let's just say we use the easement, it's going directly into a tight pipe. And again, with the video inspection, we see no breaks. Um, there was no groundwater running through the pipe, so that's good, there's, there's no infiltration. Um, that then going into your uh, trunks and, and um. Uh, mains and down to the sewer's treatment plant. The drainage again, of course, is totally separate. Uh, there's obviously no mixed connection there. And that's part of the problems, like Maria said. Um, we see this all over the place. We work in towns where if you are popping out. Anything on your, your dwelling, any, any increase in the footprint, you will inspect your uh, sewer lateral. With the witness of the sewer department staff. And if they find there's any flaws with that, you will repair that lateral. So that's one of the programs that we see happening in various towns that we work in. Uh, but for the drainage, again, this is spread out all over the place, all over the site. And we, we do a lot of things. It's, it's the rain garden, I think, is, is one of the better things. And you'd be surprised of how difficult that is for.
Yeah.
Uh, private homeowners, let alone developers, to accept. It takes up room. Well, it's an amenity, and it does a lot of good things. It, it helps to take that water in, helps to infiltrate it. So you get a lot of bang for your buck. And the permeable pavement, again, the same thing we were talking about. We have reservoirs underneath those, we have infiltration units around the perimeter of the building for the roof. So those are now designed, not that they're sometimes saying, I want you to design for the twenty-five year storm and, and. Let me, and show me what happens for the hundred year event. In this case, we've taken all storms for the hundred year event, and we've shown a, a decrease in the peak rate of discharge from ourselves.
Okay. So tell me if I'm thinking of this wrong, because I, I don't pretend to be an expert on this issue. I understand that we have two separate systems for. Um, stormwater drainage, water drainage, and um, for sewer as well. And both of them, I imagine feed into the wastewater treatment facility. But what, but.
I'm sorry, that, let me make sure I hear that correctly. How did you just end that sentence?
So those two separate systems, the stormwater, stormwater system, the water range, water system, does, where does that at?
So they are, they are separate systems.
Right, that's what I'm saying. They're completely separate systems. What are the endpoints of those systems?
Uh, well, for sanitary sewer, that's the sewer's treatment plant. Um, for the storm drainage, um, okay, so let's, uh, anything going out to the east. It goes down Elm, gets to the uh, entry driveway entrance to Acme. And if you've ever been in there, you'll see these series of catch basins. If you look in there, you're going to see large pipes. And I believe, I'm, I wasn't born and raised in New Canaan, that there was at one point a stream or a brook that went, ran right through that. Probably through that Acme Shopping Center, and then out to the um, the pond and the park to the south. So looking through those, we traced it. When the um, flow reaches the pipes in the street. It goes down opposite that entrance to Acme. It turns and goes down that series of pipes, and I traced it for a while through Acme, and then I assume it continues on and just. Uh, further on down into the park, the pond in the park.
Okay. Where they potentially conflate, and again, if you could help clarify this, it'd be great. Um, is when we have stormwater infiltration, because of the mention, that some of the problems that Ms. Coppola's mentioned, and I think the basis for the ACOM study. That that capacity, that flow gets added to the sewer system when we have stormwater infiltration. Is that correct?
No, no, so that, that, that's different. That's, that's from. Well, well, let's say um, old sewer pipes that were clay pipes. And there's just simply short sections with leaky joints. Those are terrible.
Okay.
A lot of municipalities are slip lining those to put a, essentially a plastic liner within the clay liner. Um, then you have the leaky laterals from the houses, and you have the illegal salt pumps. I don't believe, and you correct me if I'm wrong, that you, Norwalk, I think, is one city that still does. I don't believe we have any combined sewers right now.
We have no combined sewers, and actually, we have slip lined. We, we have done that in the past, and we just most recently um, finished right in front of Town Hall, Main Street. With lining, so there are opportunities, right? There are opportunities.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners. Anybody else? For, not for, thank you, Ms. Copeland, thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. Any other questions for anybody else? Advisors to the commission, any questions? Planner Avni, any questions? We're all good? Okay, um. Think we're all set. I was thinking about asking a question, but I think I'm going to be. I'm going to be merciful. Um, attorney Hollister, anything else at your end? You good?
Nope, we have a list of things and we'll get to work on.
Yeah, actually, thank you for bringing that up. So I've got um, landscaping, we've reviewed what we need in depth on landscaping, so I'm not going to try to read through that. Um. I think we did ask traffic to revisit, you know, the various moving pieces at the site, but specifically on Wheaton Elm, the driveway, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I don't know if we ever got the answer on total impermeable coverage right now in the site. Don't need to get that answer tonight, but would like to get it. Um. I think Mister Angle asked for the height difference between um the neighbor to the north and your project and commissioners. Did I miss anything? Planner Avney, did I miss anything?
Percentage of affordable housing units in other municipalities in the state of Connecticut, how they've. Progressed in the twenty years or however long metric we want to look at it.
Okay.
And I believe that that was uh actually defined along uh comparable communities.
Yes, correct, correct.
Uh, correct, just to clarify.
I think there were several questions related to the elevation, the berm. And the height from the street. I mean, there were a lot of questions related because the only one we have on page one. Was we were told that that's an early one. It's no longer relevant. Doesn't show the, it shows a bunch of vehicles where they're not. And so we don't have any elevations or am I just missing them?
Yeah, we do. We have, we do have a few elevations. Yeah.
I, I think where it's getting lost is and, and.
Three dimensional.
It's three dimensional, but it's also the cross sections. To your point, there's schematic at this point. And I think there needs to be further clarity on the two directions of cross sections, especially the grade lines as they relate in those cross sections carrying through the building. Um, I personally, I, I can't envision what you were describing in terms of openness of the garage and hovering in half because. Knowing how that site slopes down Elm and where you're entering and where Weed Street is. The math doesn't work for me. So um, a better cross section can help.
You know, we, we talked about renderings.
Or uh landscaping, yeah. Yeah, we got that.
With the building, plants around it.
Yep, yeah, right, right. Got that. Okay, great. Um, this meeting is adjourned. Everybody get home safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we considering, is this going to be part of the agenda?
I don't think so. I don't know, no. I went to look at the agenda for Tuesday. It's not out there.